Morning, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Wacomiko County Council Legislative Session 2025-02 for January 21st, 2025. For those who would like to join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to reform which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda.
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. Good morning, Mr. Hurley, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is Resolution Number 22-2025. This is declaring the 13.32 acre tract of land owned by Wacomiko County at 5,000 Goldman Lane as surplus in exchange for the Humane Society of Wacomiko County, Inc., for the building and improvements located at 5130 Citation Drive in Salisbury, Maryland. Council did have a public hearing on this request on January the 9th, and I do believe we have our Director of Administration here, Monkey Loveman, and the Executive Director of the Humane Society, Kim Knock, if you have any questions.
Entertainer motion from council to approve the Resolution 22-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 14-2025. This is extending the date for the adoption of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 through 2030, from the 3rd Tuesday in February to June 15th, 2025. Charter Section 704-G provides that the council is to adopt a capital improvement program on or before the 3rd Tuesday in February, and Charter Section 707 provides that the council may change any of the dates set forth in Charter Section 704 by resolution. This resolution extends the date for adopting the capital improvement program to June the 15th to allow council sufficient time to review the county executive's proposed capital budget and program, to consider public input, and to account for the uncertainty of the impact of the state budget deficit on the county's fiscal planning and priorities.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 14-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have discussion, or?
Discussion next.
Okay. Yeah, I just, the only thing I would like to say is, is as long as we can, yeah, I'm fine with this, as long as we can make it a goal as a council to try and beat that timeline.
I think, Joe, you spoke about this before.
Yeah, it's been done numerous times previously, and we haven't had the audit from last year yet, so hopefully, you know, we'll have more information come to us, so, good.
This allows us more time to meet with the departments on their projects, which seem to be moving with the state of the state and the new administration in Washington, so we just need to confirm where we are, where we're going, and I believe we've not received the budget presentation yet from FY '24, so, still waiting on that. I believe that's coming to us in February, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mrs. Hurley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 15-2025. This is to accept a $1.1 million grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development through the Office of Statewide Broadband for the Connect Maryland Fiscal Year 24 Home Stretch Difficult-to-Serve Properties Grant Program. And we have Mr. John Monar here, Director of Information Technology, Lori Carter, our Grants Administrator, and Pam Olin, our Director of Finance.
Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 15-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion?
Discussion first, then.
Could we just have an overview of what this is about from, yes, Mr. Monar, Pam, and Lori, and whoever else wants to join us?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. So from my left to right, could you state your name and position, please?
Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Lori Carter, the Grants Administrator for Wacomiko County.
John Monar, Director of Information Technology. Thank you.
So, this is a grant that we've been awarded by the state to help unserved or difficult-to-reach locations. Our intention is to pass this on to four separate ISPs that have expressed interest. They will be responsible for all of the grant requirements, so it'll basically be a pass-through on our part. They would provide all the information for us to file any reports as necessary. They would be the ones who would provide the matching grants. Until we accept this grant, we can't enter into contracts with the ISPs, but we are working on drafting those as we, kind of, right now, but until this, we accept the grant, we can't actually do the next step.
Who are the ISPs?
Chop Tank, Fiber, Comcast, Simple Fiber, and Talky. Those that afford it, reach out to us.
Two of those are currently working in the county. Is that one on the east side, one on the west side?
Yeah, they're all working in the county right now, two of them. Chop Tank and Talky have, currently have existing grants through the state.
Mrs. Hurley, did we have a map?
There was a map, a link to you guys that connects to a map on the Maryland State Broadband's website.
Yeah, the Office of Statewide Broadband, they maintain the maps of where existing broadband networks exist, and what providers are in what locations, and where there are current grants. So the state, through their office, they maintain all those maps.
Do you have that laptop set up there if you want to be able to show the public?
Sure, I can do that.
While we're doing that, while we're playing musical chairs, is this going to, let's say someone has a 400-foot driveway, will this connect folks like that, or is this taking it to the road and then stopping?
Yeah, it's small projects, so it's, this grant funds each project up to $8,000, so it's for projects like that, that are on the edge of networks that have long driveways or long lanes, and will help fund those, the extension of the fiber or COAX down those lanes.
Guess we've progressed in leaps and bounds in internet access in the past two, three years, right?
So again, we're, we've been working with the state, we've been working a little bit with the ISPs, but basically, we aren't in a position as a county to manage these projects. We don't have the infrastructure within our staffing, and so that is why we are writing the grant agreements, the sub- recipient agreements with the ISPs, that it is all their responsibility. Ultimately, if they decide not to sign it, then we can offer more money to another ISP, but we are, we are basically, the state won't go directly to the ISPs, so we do have to be the middleman, but we are not taking any financial risk. That's how we are going to write our sub- recipient agreements.
If this grant proves to not be enough funding, is there one possibly behind it?
Yes. It was my understanding, after speaking with the director, they're looking to come out with another one sometime in June.
Thank you.
So now it's just waiting for the map.
We are very fortunate to have a Grants Administrator in our county now. Thank you.
So this is the map that the state maintains? Oh, it's not showing it. Okay. Hold on, let's see here.
We're about ready to get some technical assistance.
This one's this one. You want me to do extended? There we go. All right. This is the map that the Office of Statewide Broadband maintains. As you can see, the tan areas are where service is offered by a single provider, and those areas are all considered served in terms of grant funding purposes. The off-yellow areas, that means there's at least two providers in those areas. The navy areas with the mesh over top, those are areas that are currently being built and are funded by existing grants. You can see on the east side of the county, this is a grant that Chop Tank Fiber received for almost $4 million, and they're actively building over there. On the west side of the, I mean, east side of the county, you'll see areas where Talky received grant funding, and they're actively building over there. So this, this grant here is, you look at the edge of the networks that each provider's building out, and it funds small projects on the edge of their existing networks to try to reach those little areas that you might see that are in navy, that don't have any grid over them. They're either large farms or open areas. Some of them have no houses on them, that's why they're there, but this grant, if you divide it up, it's almost 138 different little projects that can be done, so hopefully it will fill in the little voids.
Nice, thank you. Questions? Anybody?
I have a question, kind of, off-related, not completely. Lori, as a grant writer, your last meeting, we had a, you know, the fire departments up here, and there's going to be additional funding needed for EMTs, and is there any grants out there that you've been working on, or that you know about? And I see we're doing this 1.1 million for internet service. I was wondering if there's any grants that's going to assist us in helping to fund our first responders?
Sure. I think I even met with a couple of them at the beginning of my time when I actually came back, so there are some funds that's available through FEMA, and there's also some funds available through the United States Department of Ag, so I have been looking at those as well.
Okay. So there's a possibility?
Yes, sir.
Trying to get, okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept this grant.
So moved. Second.
Motion and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next is a submission of an appointment to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board and Wacomiko County Commission on Aging, and we have Mr. Monkey Loveman, our Director of Administration.
Good morning.
So, I do need a little guidance from Ms. Hurley, because we're attempting to submit one name for two different ones. Do you want me to read them both at the same time, and then they vote on both resolutions, or?
You can read them both at the same time, and then we'll do the resolutions.
Okay, thank you. So, this is for Janice Hess to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. The board provides impartial oversight of republic guardianship cases to ensure wards receive services and treatment appropriate to their disabilities. And then also the Commission on Aging, which assists older adults in Wacomiko County with health, social, economic, and environmental challenges. They also advocate for older residents and provide assistance in resolving problems which can impact their quality of life, and we're submitting Ms. Janice Hess for these two.
Okay, before you use Resolution Number 16-2025, this is confirming the appointment of Janice E. Hess to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 17-2025, confirming the appointment of Janice E. Hess to the Wacomiko County Commission on Aging.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Just clarification, this is a submission, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vice President? I just want to point out, I serve on the Commission on Aging for the council, and Janice has been really fantastic for the whole time that I've been there, really great addition, somebody who's on top of it every time for the work that we've been doing before. She is helping out administrators on things, but certainly been around and just a great, I just want to highlight how fantastic work she's done, so, thank you, Mr. Loveman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Hess aboard.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 18-2025, amending the fiscal year 2025 operating budget in the Position Control Document to reflect an increase in salary for Position 100511 for the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. And we have Tracy Taylor here, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Discussion? Ms. Taylor?
Yeah.
Just, give a little, little overview on this, if you would, please.
Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Tracy Taylor, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development.
So, just a little background, this position, when they were promoted to the position in fiscal '24, they were offered in their offer letter a raise if they completed some certifications. Those certifications have now been completed, and we are asking council to approve the funds for that raise.
I believe the amount here is about $4,000, is that right?
Yeah, it's $4,000, I have it in my memo, $4,594.
It's already been budgeted, correct?
Well, they have sufficient salary savings because of the fact that they've had some vacant positions, so we're not asking for a budget amendment. We don't need any contingency funds. They have sufficient savings within their budget to accomplish this.
Okay.
So it's only a change to the position control document, not to the actual budget.
Anything else?
No, just that this was part of the offer letter. We're just trying to honor the offer letter, and I will say it's quite an accomplishment to get all of these certifications done in the timeframe that it was accomplished, so I think that deserves some credit and some recognition.
All right, well, thank you. Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 19-2025. This is to accept a grant from the Governor's Office for Children under the Enough LMB Capacity Building Grant in the amount $211,500. And we have Stephanie King here, Director of Local Management Board.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion?
Would she like to come up and?
We need Ms. King, come on up, please.
Stephanie King, Director of Local Management Board.
Okay.
Pam Olin, Finance Director, again.
Kathy Beekman, Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore.
Thank you. Okay. Can you give us an update on this, please?
All right, so this was an allocation from the state. The point of the grant is to help assist in breaking generational poverty, so we were, there was different tracts, there were tracts that had to be applied for, we don't have any qualifying areas in Wacomiko County currently. We do have areas where they did a capacity building grant where they allocated money, and we start building capacity in areas in the county, so that, moving forward, if there is qualifying areas, we already have the structure there, the partnerships, to be able to carry out grants in those areas.
This grant does require a position, since we were still working on the dollar amount and going through HR and getting all that, we will be coming back to council at the next meeting. It'll be 100% grant-funded position, so if council accepts this grant today, then there is an add-on on the next meeting to allow us to hire a person 100% grant-funded.
Pam?
How long does this grant, is this position, if it gets hired, does that position only last as long as a grant lasts?
Yes, yes. So if we get another grant, and the position can be refunded, that's fine. If we do not get any additional funds, the position will not exist.
Okay, okay.
I guess when you hire someone like that, are they hired with the knowledge that that could happen?
Yes. It's, it is in the advertisement, it's in the interview process, it's in the final documents associated with them being hired.
I put in for a three-month extension, so this grant wouldn't end June 30th. We put in for a no-cost extension for September 30th.
So it would, if we come back to council at the first meeting in Oct-, or October, sorry, February, we hope to have the position hired by the end of February. It would be then in place for basically March through September.
So out of the $211,000, what's the salary?
$55,000.
Seventy-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, okay, all right.
Just one other question. So just for clarity, I guess with these funds and with this position, what specific action are we, or actions are we going to expect to reduce or eliminate generational poverty?
So we have, it's written in the grant that we have a partnership with Dewey's Consultants, and they'll be doing specific community needs assessments in these areas. I also have, the Community Foundation has a summit that they do every year for nonprofits. Part of the grant was that we wrote that we were going to send nonprofits who otherwise may not be able to afford to go to the summit. We're going to pay for their admission to go to the summit so that they can participate in really important and vital workshops to kind of help them build their capacity as being a nonprofit that serves these areas.
Yeah.
Anything else?
We good?
Motion to approve and accept.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you want us to stick around for the next one?
Yeah, there's one more.
Yeah.
Okay, so next is Resolution Number 20-2025. This is authorized in the county executive to accept an additional grant for the local management board from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of $99,375, and the award of administrative funds of $3,000 under the Maryland Connected Devices Program.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Is it, I'm just declaring, it's not a motion to approve, this would just be motion to, we're just bringing this up, and then it's a first and a second, and then discussion? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a first and a second, and then discussion.
Discussion, yeah. That would be a?
Yeah.
I have a second for the discussion.
Second for the discussion, okay.
This is a continuation of a grant that we had last year where we received laptops from the state, and we did the distribution. So the state does give us $3,000 that is for our administrative costs to have people available during the times when we do these giveaways, and checking their eligibility and all that kind of stuff. The rest of the grant is actually the cost of the hardware that we then are distributing.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm, I'm.
Discussion? Now we can have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 21-2025. This is confirming the meal rates in Chapter 14, titled Travel, Meals, and Lodging of the Personnel Manual. And we have Don O'Hara here, our Human Resource Director.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution 21-2025.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we got a second. All in favor?
For discussion.
For discussion. And we do need Mrs. O'Hara up here, just for confirmation of something for the public's knowledge.
Good morning. Don O'Hara, Director of HR.
Okay. I believe this is just confirming the same rates that you used last year.
Same rates. We just have to submit it every January, too. That's our requirement, that we have to do that every January, so we're just trying to stay on top.
I think we call it a formality, right?
That's right.
All right. Mr., anybody have any questions? Josh?
Yeah, just one question, I guess, is this, the numbers that were put in here, is this, just from my own understanding and edification, I guess, is that, is that like a federal average, or is this like, is this built, you know, like the federal government, what's the reimbursement rate?
Basically, it's based on the state, it's pretty close to what the state is. I think we're right on target with breakfast and lunch, and pretty close with dinner, so pretty much the average of those.
Is there guidance, I guess, on that, I guess, is the main thing? We just choose?
We kind of, I think we talked to a couple of different counties when we got it approved, when we brought it before you guys last year, we did a little bit of a survey, I think Charles and Pam were also involved in that, and just kind of getting what would be, you know, financially reasonable for us, and we also listened to the input of some of the directors and the other employees about their experiences as they're out there on different parts of the country trying to get meal replacement, and kind of came to a happy medium that everybody could agree with, that was about the average, like I said, of what the state typically does, so.
So when these are, when these receipts are turned in, do you find that they're spending that much money for meals, or what's the history show?
So that would be a question that I would lean on Pam more for, because I don't actually, they may come through HR, but then they get evaluated more detailed by Charles and Pam.
So Pam Olin, Finance Director, the, last year we came to you for raises on these numbers, and these are the exact same as last year, as Donna stated. We came to you because the previous year, we were, we had a lot of people meeting these numbers and/or exceeding them, and thus they were then paying out of pocket for meals that we had authorized them to go on travel for. This year, it is not as frequent, it still exists. I'm, you know, I have a personal example, I just went last week to a Mako meeting in Annapolis, we went to lunch. It didn't meet the lunch requirement for Charles and myself to go to lunch there, but we made that decision by, based on what we also purchased, so I'm well aware that I'm only going to get reimbursed the amount of the, this per diem. So, 22 for breakfast is, should be sufficient for most breakfasts now, even at a hotel. It may not pay.
You've got 18 for breakfast.
Or, I mean, 18 for breakfast, sorry, I was remembering the numbers wrong, I didn't have, 18 and, it should pay for most breakfast, maybe not room service, but you should be able to get a breakfast for $18. $22, you should be able to go a lot of places and get a meal for $22. Again, you, the $22 would have been sufficient if I had made different choices on the menu, but that was my choice, and I knew I was only going to get $22 reimbursed, so, $40, again, you're not going to go to a Ruth Chris, but you're going to be able to eat dinner with funds from the county. So again, you may have to make some decisions, but these numbers are much more sufficient than the numbers that we had previously.
Why do we not do, just do like a per diem X amount?
So we talked about that last year before we brought this to council, but then there was, we would have had to rewrite our employee handbook significantly, because there was, you know, then you've got half-days of travel, you've got, right now we've got it written as, you know, at certain times you can get breakfast and lunch, or certain times you can get lunch and dinner. We would have had to then rewrite that whole section, and ultimately made the decision that for ease of administration for the time. that for ease of administration for the time being, it made more sense to break it down by meal.
I'm sure it was a bit of a challenge with dealing with all the different markets, because things that cost one thing around here are different across the bridge, out of state.
I mean, we did look at tying it to, we did also look at tying it to federal per diem rates, but again, that would have necessitated a major change in how we administer our program. And ultimately, before we came to council a year ago with these rates, we had had all those discussions internally with administration and some department heads, and ultimately did a decision to keep it at the way that we currently do it, and it's by meal.
Is there a, when you talk about travel, does any of this include lunches and breakfast and dinners locally in the county?
They do not fall under these amounts.
So they don't, they don't get per diem for that?
They do not get per diem. There is, we have some guideline, guidelines associated with meals, but we, we do not make them follow the $18, the $22. So, for example, during the snow event, that's local, it's not travel, we paid for meals for our employees to be able to plow roads.
Right.
And didn't have them have to follow these rates.
Yeah, included, I know, I know it's, somewhere it's written that we don't pay for alcohol.
We do not pay for alcohol, and the maximum tip amount allowed is 20%.
Okay, so in these per diems, alcohol cannot be on one of these receipts?
No. So let me rephrase that. It could be on a receipt, but the employee has to deduct that from the amount that they're requesting.
Okay, alright.
So they may have alcohol on a receipt that could be in our system, but that amount has been deducted from the amount that they're getting reimbursed.
Thank you all. I'll entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 21-2025.
The move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Vice President, that's all I have.
Alright. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Good morning, Mr. Benson.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President, Council. We're here to introduce Legislative Bill 2025-22. It's an act to amend Chapter 37, titled Ethics Law. Article 2, titled Ethics Commission, Section 37-5, titled Ethics Commission, to require special legal counsel for the Ethics Commission to avoid a conflict of interest or appearance of a conflict of interest. Currently, the Ethics Commission is represented by the County Attorney's Office in reviewing other counties with executive branch, the same as Wycomico. Most of those counties have a, have a solution or situation where they authorize either independent counsel, or larger counties like Montgomery or Prince George's County that appear to have quote-unquote "ethics departments," where they have an attorney within the ethics department. In Hartford County, for instance, there's a similar provision where the ethics, the commission is advised by an independent attorney. The situation that this addresses is a situation where there's an ethics complaint filed against the executive or members of the executive department that work with the county attorney to avoid a conflict of interest. The council, the purpose of this bill would be to authorize an independent counsel to represent the Ethics Commission on all ethics complaints. In Cecil County, I think it is that they have a situation where the county council attorney represents the Ethics Commission if there's an executive complaint. But rather than doing it in that manner, this bill would simply authorize an independent counsel. The expectation would be that the independent counsel would be paid at the same rate that the county attorney would be paid at. Under Maryland law, before you can make a change to the Ethics Commission, Wycomico County Ethics Commission law, it has to go to the State Ethics Commission. This was submitted to the State Ethics Commission in December, and on January 16th, the county received a letter back from the, the State Ethics Commission indicating that this was consistent with state law, and that they did not object. This is here today for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. I'll entertain a motion from council to approve the introduction of Legislative Bill 2025-02.
The move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One thing I just, I'm just gonna, listen, I agree with the whole thing. I'm just, I'm just trying to point a few things out. It says, let's just say, the county attorney doesn't have any of the information that special counsel has, so I'm just saying, like, for, not for any cases that happen with the executive per se, but for all other cases that happen with the county, will the county attorney be able to get the records for, for any incidents? That way, they can help deter any claims or anything that happens with, with any of the ethics violations. That way, because right now, what we have is, I guess we have an ethics board, and the county attorney is right here, and he has the commission, and then they, they have discussion, and then if there's a problem later on, they'll have that information later because it's in their records. But if it's in special counsel the whole time, I guess, is the county attorney not going to be involved at all in any county business?
I think he'll be involved in county business.
No, no, I mean, as far as ethics. Like, is it, we don't want the county attorney involved with any ethics at all?
The current situation is that there's an ethics complaint. The county attorney's office provides legal representation to the Ethics Commission to provide counsel. The Ethics Commission, I presume, makes a determination on each ethics complaint, and advises the county executive what those decisions are. And that would not change, as I see it. It simply would change the individual providing the Ethics Commission with legal advice.
Okay, okay. And the other question is, is for this special attorney, who's, who will be the one appointing the special attorney?
It would be done, I assume, in the same way all other appointments are done, and that would be that the county executive would make a recommendation, the county council would approve.
Okay, alright. It's just, these are just questions I have to ask. And I just don't want to add another layer unnecessarily if, if we're doing that, so. Andrew, does that, does that sound like I missed anything, or, I mean, you're here. I'm sorry.
Andrew Illuminati, Wycomico County Department of Law. So just, it's good that we're getting clarification that the intent is that this is appointed by the exec and confirmed by council, so that it's a double process, and not just that the Ethics Commission selects their own attorney, because it does read as, though the Ethics Commission shall retain special independent legal counsel. I do want to clarify, it's not just a matter of for the county attorney to advise just the executive, but also county council. So the county attorney serves both branches of the government. So this would remove, you know, there's currently an issue where the value of one entity doing all the guidance is that the, there's institutional knowledge. So issues that present themselves routinely are the same. There may be a business individual who has a question about whether or not they can do business, and we have history going back multiple years, and that covers those. This is gonna, I don't really, if they're, if the legal advice is just going to the Ethics Commission, and that's just to advise the commission, I think it does need to be clarified that, you know, because it says the independent legal counsel shall maintain the files and records of the commission on behalf of the county and the commission. There is enough here that it's then creates the issue of, long-term, that the legal counsel then advises on all matters that stem from the ethics complaint, not just advising the commission when they reach their decision, and then the county attorney implements that decision. So I think it could have been phrased better, but it seems that the understanding is, the attorney only advises the commission in making their decision, but that the Department of Law executes that decision. That's everyone's understanding, and that's what Mr. Benson recited. Not that the commission attorney makes, advises the commission, but then also executes that guidance. So if there is a violation, then that commission attorney would then enforce that violation, or, so I think it could be cleaned up a little bit more, that clearly the legislative intent's been stated on the record, but the way it's phrased, it does read as though, when they maintain the files and the records, that those files and records aren't coming to the county attorney to then implement that decision. Because this does extend to possibly elections decisions which the county attorney has to make. So I think we've clarified some of the issues, that the ambiguity of the language has, a rephrase may be better.
I have a question. Could we make it so that the special legal counsel receives the records and files, as well as the county attorney's office receives the records and files? That way, both have documentation of what happened, or what's happening?
I'd like that, and like, the county attorney shall administer the decision of the Ethics Commission as a final sentence. That way, it's clear that the Ethics Commission makes their decision, receives their own independent legal counsel, and then whatever decision is made, through the HR standpoint and everything else, the county attorney then takes over that role that's always been filled.
Mr. Benson, do you have...
Benson?
There was, there's no intent here to remove the county attorney. It's simply, there's a complaint registered, and the Ethics Commission meets, and while the Ethics Commission is meeting, if they need legal advice, this provides them with an independent attorney to provide legal counsel during that ethics process. The Ethics Commission, I assume, will issue a report. That report will go to the county, and the county attorney, and the county executive, and the county attorney are then, in the same way they are, they do today, would then administer the decision that the Ethics Commission makes.
You think we should spell that out in here?
If you all want to make changes, you can redline it. If Mr. Illuminati wants to redline something, we can make a change.
I'd suggest...
Are you recommending that, or are you...
I'm not sure it's necessary, but I'm not opposed to it.
I suggest that Mr. Illuminati and Mr. Benson get together and hash out the differences that's been discussed today. Mr. Benson, the, the state approved what we sent them, right?
The state, the state had the resolution, they reviewed it, and they approved it. I would note that the county executive filed a letter with the State Ethics Commission indicating she was not in favor of this. We sent a letter explaining why we wanted to do it. The State Ethics Commission said that it was not inconsistent with state law, and that we are authorized to proceed.
I think the goal of all this is to avoid a conflict of interest. So, Mr. Benson, correct me if I'm wrong, the county executive oversees the law department, oversees the Ethics Commission, the people on the Ethics Commission are selected by the county executive. So if a complaint were to be filed against the county executive, having, not having outside counsel could present a conflict of interest. Is that right?
That's, that's the pro, that's the perceived problem. I mean, Dorchester County does not have an executive form of government, but if you look at Dorchester County, for instance, they have an independent attorney, but they actually say that the independent attorney has to not primarily practice law in Dorchester County. They require it to be an attorney from outside Dorchester County. That doesn't seem wholly practical, but that's how far you can go with this, as to, you know, providing independent advice to the Ethics Commission. It places, with all due respect to the county attorney's office, it places the county attorney's office in a, in a difficult situation when they're providing potential legal advice on a complaint that involves their boss.
But again, I just do want to emphasize that the county attorney is confirmed by the council, the Ethics Commission members are confirmed by the council, and so if someone files a complaint, or a prospective opinion is sought by a member of council, that same alleged issue of a conflict could exist. So we still answer to council. Unlike the council attorney, who only answers to council, the county attorney answers to both the executive and the council. So it's not just an issue of a potential, perceived issue with the county executive, but also a potential issue with council, because prospective council member filing for an election may seek an Ethics Commission opinion on whether or not they could do something in both their private business and also in their, if elected, position. So again, it's not just the executive, it is coming from both branches of government.
The distinct, not to disagree completely with Mr. Illuminati, the distinction is that if the county council wants to fire Bob Benson, the county council can fire Bob Benson. If the county council decides they want to terminate the county, Wycomico County Law Department, they can't do that. Only the county executive can do that.
Do that without approval from the county council?
The county executive can terminate the county, the county law department at her sole discretion. She can't appoint somebody new without submitting it to the council, but she has a sole discretion to terminate the county law department.
Officer Baker?
Mr. President, I'm, I'm fine with the way this is written. I'll run.
I do. Council on Hastings?
Yeah, just, I guess, the clarity on C, the, the last line of C, at the direction of the Ethics Commission, the special independent legal counsel shall maintain the files and records, the commission on behalf of the county and the commission. Can you please, I understand the rest of C, that makes total sense. I guess, the, what is the, what's the importance of maintaining the files and records of the commissions, and who does such an activity?
So currently, the Department of Law maintains them. Again, if the idea is that whatever opinion the Ethics Commission is making, and then the county, the Department of Law is going to enforce that decision, the Department of Law is going to need to receive the files and the records, that they can, whatever the opinion is. So that's, again, where, sort of that last sentence that presents the issue or the possible future ambiguity, I realize the consensus and the understanding today is, the department will continue to fulfill its function of executing that opinion of the commission, but with that last sentence is where it creates possible future issues. By a different counsel.
When, when the Ethics Commission renders an opinion, what, what does the law department need besides the opinion that the Ethics Commission issues?
I mean, there's really not, I mean, there's the initial complaint, which then gives you the understanding of, or the question that's presented, so you have that background, and then you get the opinion based on that background. So a well-written opinion that outlines the facts, the issue, and the conclusion would alleviate any other issue. So.
I'd like to make a motion that we add the records be maintained by the county attorney as well as special counsel. Did I say that right?
Well, I would, I would suggest, if you're going to amend it, that it would say that the, the special legal, independent legal counsel should maintain the files and records of commission on behalf of the county commission, and she'll provide a copy to the county law department.
So I'd like to make a motion that the special independent legal counsel shall maintain a copy of the, the files and records of the commission on the behalf of the county and the commission.
That's different from what...
Is that different than what you said?
I would, what I would suggest is, if you all pass this today, you do it with instructions for us to incorporate the language that we think you, you want, so that when you come back for the public hearing, and the second vote on this, that we have a written document for you all to look at. All we're doing is passing the introduction, we're not passing the C introduction.
I think to, to both Mr. Benson and Mr. Wynn's points, I think that makes sense to be able to add on to that piece, that just, we're, we're being very clear as to who the custodian or steward, who stewards the files. The next step is just a question of who can, you know, gets a copy... The next step is just a question of who can, you know, gets a copy of those files. So I think that's not out of the realm. And I don't think that goes anything past what the State Ethics Commission would go along with. We're basically just saying, keeping it as is, but just add on to that, that there'll be a county, the county attorney's office would then, would have a copy of those. And I think that's reasonable.
Mr. Benson, I can easily come up with language that will satisfy that.
Just, just so everybody's clear on this, that the special counsel is already an option in all this. It's, we're just making it a law. So it's...
I, I mean, just, just to clarify, there was an ethics complaint made, and that involved the executive department. And we determined that Mr. Wilber indicated that in discussion of this before it was presented, that it was an option for the Ethics Commission to hire special counsel. But in that situation, they didn't do it. And I don't even know if the county, the executives, the Ethics Commission knows they have that option. But they didn't do it.
They absolutely do know they have the option. We've utilized special counsel in the past. I don't know which specific, if it's a historical complaint, a current complaint. I do not advise the Ethics Commission. I've assisted them when Mr. Wilber's been out of town. But, and in that instance, it was actually where we retained special independent counsel to create, to eliminate any possibility of a perceived issue. So it's not picking and choosing by the county attorney as to when they will provide special counsel and not. It's absolutely when the situation calls for it.
So, there, there was an ethics complaint within the last six months against the county executive. And the county Ethics Commission did not use special counsel. They utilized the county legal department, according to Mr. Wilber.
So before we get too carried away, I think we need to see if Councilman Wynn's amendment passes or fails. And then we need to vote on this.
Okay.
We're not going to do an amendment.
Yeah, we're, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Just to make it official. But I would like if Mr. Benson and Mr. Illuminati could get together before the, we pass something, and then make sure the language looks the way it should.
I will provide Mr. Illuminati a redline draft.
Okay.
Either today or tomorrow, or Thursday.
I guess the only other point as to this one, the last six months, is the decisions of the Ethics Commission stay with the Ethics Commission. So I don't know how, whether, like, that a complaint was even filed would be generally well-known. The only people that know a complaint's filed are the person who files a complaint, the attorney's office receives a complaint, and the commission when it deliberates. So as I said, even within our own office, I'm not aware of complaints because I don't handle that. So even within our own office, we isolate that to keep it to just one person. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2025-02, say aye.
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 Opposed? Mrs. Hurley, should we do a roll call?
Yeah, for the introduction, you do not have to do it by roll call.
Okay. All right, 2025-02 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benson. All right, we are up to public comments. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Mr. Robson? Good morning.
Good morning to you all. Good chilly morning. Phew, it's walking from the parking garage to here was sort of a shocker, you know? I'm Bruce Robson, Wycomico County resident. As you know, I'm involved with an initiative to make our roads more proud-worthy. Now, I don't know if proud-worthy is a real word. Spell check on the computer says it's not. But I think it accurately describes what we're aiming for, to ride down a Wycomico County road and be proud. The main thrust of this effort so far has been elbow grease. We just go out and pick up trash. It has become starkly clear that what we're doing is inadequate to the challenge. In fact, it can feel like sticking a finger in a badly leaking dam. We are very appreciative that the council, the county executive, and county staff have stepped up in support of a new position to focus on long-term solutions to this plague. We believe this is a huge step and are optimistic it will happen. I refer to littering and illegal dumping as a plague, and because it is a plague. It's an aesthetic plague. It looks awful. It's an environmental plague. We, we know that. It's also an economic plague. Let's look at that, at the economic perspective of this plague. Have you ever talked to a realtor who expounds on how littered roadways help them in the sale of houses? Of course not. Have you ever heard a developer who said they're building an area because of all the trash on the roads? Of course not. How about businesses that are exploring a move to Wycomico County? Are trash-strewn highways a plus? Again, of course not. What about the county's direct costs of dealing with it? I'd like to know an estimate of what the county spends each year on litter and illegal dumping remediation. In the one year we've been working on this, we're aware of several times the county has sent dump trucks and a front-end loader to clean up illegal dumping. That can't be cheap. Plastic bag control at the landfill recently learned that blowing bags are gathered weekly on the landfill. So people are paid to do this, pick up plastic bags to prevent them from spreading, causing issues with machinery, et cetera. And the big one is, it's our understanding, and then in a very few years, the county will need to build a new landfalls, landfill cell at the cost of $20 million? I, I don't know what the number is, but it's big. If they can be deferred, if that could be deferred because of less pressure on the landfill, that could be real money. One step in addressing this plague would be a countywide plastic bag ban. It would have the same beneficial effect that it has had in other areas. And we are committed to help however we can, including finding funding for reusable bags, working with retailers to address challenges that this may cause, because it might, helping stores understand how this works. In short, whatever it takes, we are committed to this. We look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For the, for the record, the county was able to find a illegal dumper recently that was tracked down by the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Morning, Vice President Merritt.
Morning.
Councilman. So I just want to personally thank you all. Holly Ortell, Wycomico County resident, Member of Pittsville, and still the president of the Wycomico County Firefighters Association, only for a little while. I want to thank all of you gentlemen that have supported the association, coming to our meetings. It truly means a lot to me. Your work that you've done with us for the budget, for the tax credit, helping with the 1099. It does not go unnoticed, I promise you that. Tonight, I've had to cancel, but I think Jeff sent out a letter, you know, in clement weather, possible some snow. Coming, I, I just hope that we continue to move forward. I know the budget's going to stink. You know, the state of Maryland, we're in trouble. When they were talking about the 1-1, this is real, real life. Real-life scenarios. I was going to bring a scenario in, a couple of them that just occurred within the last week. And it's scary. You know, when I call 911, I should be getting a paramedic and an EMT to my house. And so I hope that the county executive, I have spoken with her, I hope that, you know, she does put that in our budget. And we'll continue to move forward and work together. So thank you guys very much for this year's support.
Thank you. Thank you. And congratulations on your award.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I didn't see it coming.
Good morning, Vice President Merritt and council. Thanks for having me. My name is Peter Hockinson, Wycomico County resident. And I'm speaking on behalf of Wycomico Clean also about litter. I'm a come here, I've only been here 45 years. My wife is from here, Linda Woodin. Some of you may know her. Her father was Dick Woodin. He was on the county council many years ago. Anyway, I, again, I've been only here 45 years, and I'm, I'm big into bicycling. I bicycle all over the county. And, and I'm ashamed to see all the litter that we have when I ride through the county. It is a blight. And I have to say, well, Somerset and, you know, and Worcester County, not much better. I ride up into Delaware, around Bethel and Laurel and Delmar a lot. And it's a lot cleaner up there, and they have a bag ban in there. So, I mean, I think, I think it can work. Linda and I drove up to Canada and Vermont last summer. And Vermont is clean as can be. They have a total bag ban, and there's no litter there. And the Quebec province was pretty much the same way. Even downtown Montreal is pretty litter-free. So my point is, it can work. I think between education and law enforcement and, and changing the minds and a bag ban would be a good start. But getting the mindset to change, I think we can make this county a cleaner place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, county council. I live in the county on Calvin Drive in Salisbury. And what's the problem is...
Sorry, what's your name?
Donald Robinson. And Glen Avenue School is the, some of the properties on east of Calvin Drive border Glen Avenue School. And on Glen Avenue, the school zone sign is about 30 feet west of Calvin Drive. And what I've noticed from December 7th to the 13th, it's 25 mile an hour speed limit, that there's been a bunch of zips which would be over 50 mile an hour going down the street. And the biggest one was Friday the 13th of the most. Wednesday's was good, too, with about 20-some, 18 to 20 zips, and about 25, over 25 mile an hour. Because you can tell the ones that are barely over it. But I don't, I've been to the police departments, and nobody, everybody's underhanded. And you can't come. And I don't know what would happen, but I don't know what could be done. But I think the simplest thing would be a couple of bumper strips on the street. I know that's kind of, you know, a lot done, but that would probably eliminate a lot of the stuff. Because I do know they come off of Bigland Park, turn on Glen, and come up Calvin Drive. Because I followed one turning that way, and I ran 25, and it was steady pulling away from it. I'd say doing 30. But the ones that zip, they're running and beating the light at, you know, down and going out. And the problem there is, we, there's nobody to do anything about it. And whatever you can come up with, it would be a big help to everybody on the street. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's county, that's county, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Glad, glad.
The three streets are around the county.
Okay, just...
All right.
Good morning, thank you all. Joe White, Wycomico County. I want to commend you all for moving the CIP vote until June at the beginning of this meeting. I would love to remind you all that, you know, that process, that very transparent process actually began with our county executive having her meeting back in November, or maybe October, at the Civic Center, which was a good jumping-off point to, to find out what some of, of her priorities are. Since then, you all have had a public hearing here. Folks like myself have had a chance to come up and speak at public comments to ask you to move it. Gave you a chance to think about it, vet it out, talk to other constituents. And I think at the end of the day, you made the right decision. Conversely, I think that there's been two instances that I think regard some attention. At the last county council meeting, we had, it was a long meeting, and there were several public hearings. Three of them were regarding liquor bills. And this is the top three legislative agenda that the county executive proposed at the legislative breakfast back in September. Each of those bills, I think, wasn't good on merit. And one of them finished 3 to 3, and the other two were voted down. Since that time, it's come to my attention that our newly-appointed delegate in Annapolis is still working to circumvent some of that, some of that progress, to not go down that, that rabbit hole. I don't understand how anyone would ever think that that is a separation of power or good for transparency. It is the exact opposite of that. And then last week, I stayed for the work session, or not last week, two weeks ago, stayed for the work session, and you brought up about the harvesting of deer from farmland. That did not come with a public hearing, okay? And I, I, I think you all have inadvertently stepped into something that maybe you wish you didn't. I just want to remind you that it's always better to not rush. About two months ago, I got up here and I said, hey, I feel like people continue to put things on their deadline, on their, on their time, not what's best for us. I think you need to consider that. There's, there's a, there's a couple of you who consistently scrutinize everything, maybe even to the point that folks feel like they never want to go along with anything. I think that's good conservative government. And I don't think we need to rush into things. Thanks.
Dwight?
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I'm going to state a few things today and say a few things. And I hope none of the council members feel that I'm going to, what I'm going to discuss is stupid and not worthy of spending time on. But there are a few things that need to be highlighted and which the members of the community need to have an opportunity to address. It was previously stated by Councilman Holloway at a legislative meeting that the executive's three top priorities were liquor for this year. The executive denied that, said that was not her first three priorities. First council meeting you had in this year, what were the three public hearings on? Liquor. Thankfully, the council, as Mr. White said, rejected them. Last year, on June 18th, Councilman Hastings spoke concerning the proposed amendment to be placed on the ballot to eliminate the executive form of government. He stated at that time, and I thoroughly agreed with him, I'm systems-oriented. Put the right systems in place, and you get the right results. If you don't get the right results, you fix the system until you get the right results. Let's fix the system, put the right checks and balances in place. On November 11th, after the election and the amendment had failed, Councilman Hastings again spoke about this. He stated, it might be a bad time for us to try once again and put together another targeted charter review committee to figure out how we could do a better job improving the interactions between executive and legislative branches. Let's get a charter committee formed and get systems in place which can be put on the ballot during the next election. Another item which this committee could address might be the election cycle. Currently, the executive and council members are elected in the same cycle. This needs to be changed, either through staggered separation of the executive and council or at the minimum staggered among the council. We're currently in a situation where at the next election, we could possibly have five or more new council members and maybe a new executive in place. There needs to be some type of overlapping to that allow for some experience to be maintained. And finally, please remember, as you're working on the budget and are approving new projects, that nothing is free. Even though the project is paid for through grants, you have the expense of maintenance and upkeep upon completion. This will require more additions to the payroll through increases in the workforce and general upkeep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Good morning, county council.
Good morning, County Council. Julie Giardano, County Executive. I just had two comments to make really quickly. I wanted to clarify something that Mr. White just brought up. So, nothing was circumvented from this council. A constituent called Delegate Beecham and asked him to put forward a statewide bill. Statewide bill does not require a public hearing here. He listened, excuse me, he dropped the bill. Unfortunately, the legislature decided that it should be a local bill. And I believe that he called several of you to see if there was consensus to move forward, and you told him no. So, therefore, he has pulled the bill. So, there was nothing circumvented here. So, that's number one. Number two is also, really quickly, with the capital improvement plan not being approved till June 15th, it's fine, potentially sooner. However, just understand that we use the approved capital improvement plan to tailor the budget. So, it's going to be very difficult for us to figure out the budget, the capital side of it, without having an approved capital improvement plan. But that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. That concludes our public comments. Council comments?
Yeah, I'd like to bring out that a couple of those bills were liquor bills, yes. Two of them, I'll go over them. The third one was, you know, controversial, I get it, taking local control over who gets to decide where liquor stores go, even though I think we should ultimately have that choice. One of the bills was a performance audit. Now, you know, if you're going to deny a performance audit, I would raise a lot of questions. The other one is something silly as requiring privately owned dispensaries of alcohol to have to have a restaurant attached to their building. That doesn't make any sense, especially because our county, those dispensaries, don't require one. So, we're not really trying to help the private sector or the free enterprise if we're allowing those things to happen. But, you know, it's the decision of the council to hold off and maybe next year or maybe never. Maybe we'll pass it eventually. But, yeah, I'm just a little disappointed about that. But other than that, you know, we had the inauguration yesterday. A lot of new things are going to be happening. We've got all, as a council, we need to keep an eye on the budget to see how it's going to practice federally, because it all trickles down from there. And the weather's cold. I hope everyone stays warm. And that's all I have, Council.
Thank you, Councilman Win.
I first want to address Mr. Atkins there. I know you said you hoped, we didn't think you were stupid. I've never heard you say anything that is stupid. I always appreciate your comments when you come up. You're always very informative. Want everybody to stay warm. It's extremely cold outside. Glad everyone came out. And as far as these liquor bills go, and this is just my opinion, I feel like we talk a lot up here about liquor. I don't know if everybody else feels that way or not, but it just seems like we keep getting hit with liquor bills, liquor bills, liquor bills. And I think we got a lot more problems in this county than to worry about liquor bills. That's just my opinion. I'm not in favor of putting a whole lot of energy into these liquor bills when I think we could dedicate our time to something so much more important. That's all I have.
I'll start at the 10,000-foot level and then come down. So, yesterday, of course, was Martin Luther King holiday. There was a quote that I kept seeing put around yesterday, says, "We need leaders," from Martin Luther King Jr., that said, "We need leaders not in love with money but in love with justice. Not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." And that was a quote I kept seeing around yesterday. I did want to say, today is the 15-year anniversary of the Citizens United decision from Supreme Court. Probably one of the worst decisions has ever been made, which basically allows unlimited money to flow in from any, across the political spectrum, into any campaign or anything like that. That's a huge blow to democracy. Also, I want to say, yesterday, I saw a report, Oxfam, if you just saw, Oxfam just put together a report where... This is the problem. They gave me two mics, then you had twice as much things to say. Oxfam put together a report that basically said, "In the next five to 10 years, we're going to have probably about three trillionaires that'll exist." So, I'm not talking, I don't mean millionaires, which, when I was growing up, a millionaire was rich. And then there was billionaires. I'm saying, their report basically says, "With what we know, in the next three, in the next five to 10 years, we're going to have three, at least three trillionaires." So, speaking of the inauguration, you know, the billionaire standing behind the inauguration, standing there alongside our president, that, to me, does not look like a show of strength. That looks like a show of corruption. And I think as a whole, we all need to be so much more aware of how influence from money goes into politics, because it could wreck, it'll continue to wreck more of our democracy. And we don't mean that just at the federal level, but at the state level and at the local level. So, as a whole, we all need to do a much, much better job at constantly evaluating how we run our governments. And by the way, let me remind you, there are 33,000 governments inside the United States. So, we all have a lot of different governments. We need to make sure that they're running efficiently. And so, that means here with this body, with Wycomica County, our interactions with the executive, we need to do better. And I appreciate Mr. Atkins bringing that up. I still believe, again, that we need to do a better job at making sure that how we interact with each other, how we are clear. And then also, I think it's a good thing that we continue to update things like, you know, as we discussed earlier, on our ethics and how that process moves forward. Overall, there's going to be, we already know that the state has its own issues with deficit. The federal government's going to be cutting back. We don't, we're not exactly swimming in cash. So, as a whole, when, especially in times when money is short, we need to make sure that we are as ethically transparent as possible. And that's at all levels of government. And I'll end with, by the way, regardless, I know there's a lot of people upset with whether or not they voted for Mr. Trump or others. You know, regardless, Trump, you know, Donald Trump is our president. Again, we all need to be working together to make sure that we're advancing a country and that we are doing so in an ethically thoughtful way. So, I just invite us all to continue to move more towards democracy, towards ethical transparency, and then also, and be very more diligent towards putting good processes in place so that we can all feel comfortable with the governments that we do have. So, thank you.
Councilman Holloway? Anything?
I'm good.
You good?
I'm good. Just everybody stay warm. Warmer days are coming. Couple more days.
My comments, I'll echo a couple of things that have already been said. We all are well aware of the woes of the finances of the state. New administration was sworn in yesterday. We're well aware of the vision there. I think two words come to mind here locally, and that's called fiscal responsibility. If the council doesn't approve of something, it doesn't mean that it's a bad project or we don't like you or anything like that. It just means that it might not be fiscally responsible to do at this moment in time. It's that simple. Other than that, I appreciate everybody coming out today, braving the cold. I think we've got one or two more days, and then we can look forward to a 30-degree day. I'll take a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions. Moved. Second. All right. We've got an open work session for...
All in favor.
Pardon me?
All in favor.
Yeah, you did the motion for a second.
All in favor. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're going to take a little break? Yeah. While we get everybody here. Take five. Going to take five? Yeah, let's take a minute. Take a minute, get every... All right, welcome back, everybody. Mrs. Hurley, we got an open work session for proposed amendment to Chapter 59.
Right, so the first open work session is the proposed amendment to Chapter 59 of the Wycomico County Code Title Personnel Rules. We have our county executive, Julie Giardano, here, Sheriff Mike Lewis, our state's attorney, Jamie Dykes, and our court administrator, Melissa Leahy.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right. So, from left to right, could you state your name and title, please?
Mike Lewis, Sheriff, Wycomico County.
Jamie Dykes, State's Attorney, Wycomico.
Melissa Leahy, Court Administrator, Circuit Court for Wycomico County.
Julie Giardano, County Executive. All right.
Who wants to start?
I'll go ahead and start. So, Chapter 59 in the Wycomico County Code has several bills in it that were passed, 2020-07, 2020-08, and 2020-09. So, the one that we're focused on is 2020-09. So, we have three departments here. And what we are hoping to do is to make an amendment to the code to where we would take the sheriff's office, the state's attorney's office, and the court system out of 2020-09. So, as it stands right now, anytime there is a budget amendment or anytime there is a raise or anything like that, everything has to come in front of the county council. Right now, two of these are elected officials. One is the State Department. They just work a little bit differently than the rest of the departments. So, we feel as elected officials, or with them being elected officials, they should be able to control their own budget. And I will let any of them attest to why we came forward with this.
Thank you.
The amendment makes it consistent with state law, right? That our offices function independently. So, that's all that we're asking.
So, you would still provide a budget to the county?
So, the way that it would work is, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, the way it would work is, they would still enter everything in munis line by line. But what will be presented to the county council will be one-line items. So, it would say, for example, the state's attorney, $1 million. If there are further questions that you would have, you would schedule that time for a budget meeting with those particular departments. And it doesn't have to be filtered through the executive office. So, it would be the council working with these specific departments.
I fully support this proposal. When I met with the county executive, I feel that this better streamlines the process, number one. Number two, we are going to be able to work within our budget. If we go outside that budget, we will still come before the county council, men and women, for approval of anything beyond that amount.
operative word is streamline.
Absolutely. It streamlines the whole process, makes it easier for us to do what we need to do within our budget. If we go beyond that, we'll still come for checks and balances.
There are times emergencies happen, too, where things need to happen, whether it's moving money around here or there. And I think with those particular departments, having the constraint of having to go in front of the council every two weeks makes it very difficult, just for those specific departments. So, this way, they can do it within their means.
I'd say that the court also fully supports this legislation. It also better reflects the court's role, not as a county department, but as a separate branch of government.
I had a question, just for clarification. I think I already know the answer. But, so, you have a budget, you have, let's just say, for salaries. You have a salary of a range from 50,000 to 60,000. You're asking for leniency to go up and above, around, like, to make whatever that price needs to be. So, if you need to give them a raise and you have it in the budget for that line item, you can just slip it in. Or are you saying there's a pot of money in your department over here? Can I just slide this over to salaries and then add to salaries?
So, I, to the extent that I characterize anything incorrectly, I'm sure Ms. Giardano or Ms. Oland will correct me. But within our salary budget, as long as we have sufficient excess funds, unused vacancies, that we can make those adjustments within the line items as necessary. The reality is that sometimes decisions need to be made, offers need to be made on employment, and we need to have the latitude to have some discretion sometimes. And that having, being able to streamline those requests and do that when the money is well already within our salary budget, it's the most efficient means to do that to effectively administer our responsibilities.
I have another question. So, when you make these changes, will we be made aware of them? I mean, I understand that you have to go, you need to give this guy a raise. I understand that, get the raise to happen. But is that going to be it, or are we going to get a notification saying?
So, you wouldn't get a notification at that point in time? The only time the council would be made aware is if they had to go outside of that budget. So, they will work with the pot of money that is given to them, and they will maneuver it the way that best fits their department. So, they should be able to make the decisions on the fly for their specific department, as long as they stay within those budget means. And again, as the sheriff stated, only if they would go outside of those budget means would they come to county council. And also, if they were to create like a new position that wasn't necessarily in the position control document, they would also come in front of council. So, you won't lose seeing them, you know? So, they still may be in front of you.
And in the interest of full transparency, this would also include within the operation budget, too, the operating budget. We should be allowed, and I will tell you, as you well know, Mr. Bob Benson's already stated, I, too, am a constitutionally elected officer whose salary is paid for by the county. And for years, we had the autonomy and the flexibility to do exactly what we're requesting to do again. And then legislation will pass that remove that from us. And we would obviously like this restored, because we are responsible for managing our budgets and our salaries, as you well know, and it's paid for by the county. But we have always been good stewards of our budgets. We've never had any issues. And if we go beyond that, then we will come. And we would prefer to come to the county council for approval for further checks and balances. Other than that, it just gives us the autonomy to continue to do what we've always done within our operating and salary budgets.
So, if we were to pass this, let's say you want to give somebody a $5,000 raise, you wouldn't need any approval from the executive or the council? You could do it if it's in your budget?
Correct.
I'm understanding this very...
That is correct. If we had it in our salary budget, absolutely.
They would just have to let payroll know, obviously. Finance, they would be involved.
Sheriff Lewis?
Yes.
Would this have any impact on the collective bargaining agreement that's already in...
It would not.
Okay.
It would not.
The collective bargaining agreement itself pretty much has a monetary figure with it, with salaries and things like that, so that will already be set.
Would it have any impact on the sheriff's salary?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you couldn't raise your own salary?
No, sir.
Yeah.
Only you can do that, sir.
Okay.
Only the county council can do that.
And...
I'm sure I would have got that question from somebody before the week was over.
So, this is consistent with criminal procedure, Section 15423, which is the Wycomico County's funding statute. This is all consistent with what has always been permitted, but for 2020-09. So, this is entirely consistent with state law, as it already exists. But for 2020-09, wherein there was concern of county departments and their potential liability if they redirected funds at our request, consistent with state law.
I just can say, I think overall, it looks like there's significant safeguards around this as far as not going outside the budget, specific to salary. I think all that generally sounds good. I don't, in general, I would like to see more of government continue to reduce as many processes that are duplicative or not necessary or just delay things. I think the demisklerosis of government in general is a problem, and that should be addressed. So, I appreciate you going through this. I guess just one clarist, question, is this more consistent also with other counties?
Yes. I mean, 2020-09, yeah, is not really seen throughout the state at all, especially when a department, if they don't follow it, is threatened with a misdemeanor and a $1,000 fine. So, yeah, that's very much just Wycomico County.
Okay, well, I guess in general, I'd love to see us continue to look at more ways through your departments and through the work you all are doing to try to make sure that we have significant guardrails, that the power is being shared and that we're transparent, but also that we're reducing, you know, some of these activities that just take up time and delay the work of government.
It also reduces the micromanaging within our departments.
Thank you.
And it... And it does help. I mean, you know, because things have to be filtered through me that come through you, I mean, it just really alleviates a lot of that, and they can move with their departments a lot quicker. And in the roles that they're in, it's pretty vital for them to be able to do so.
And I think it's going to help also, because you've got employees that are, got their salaries on public display all the time. And I mean, like, it's a public position and job, but, you know, when we're voting on somebody's salary, and I've never met the man, you know him firsthand, you should have that determination to decide whether or not they need a $2,000 or $3,000 raise.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with it, because we have a safeguard. We could always go back.
Right.
If something got out of control, we could always pass legislation to.
We can govern it now, or we can just cut the budget a little bit more if we had to.
Well, the good news is, is that two out of the three, I mean, I know Ms. Leahy's position is a little bit different, they're accountable to the voters. So, if there is an out-of-control budget, I mean, they are accountable, there is accountability factor when it comes to the vote, so.
We have two other that I can think of, clerk of courts and registrar of wills. Will this affect their offices also?
State.
Those are state compensated offices.
Pardon me?
Those are state, well, yeah, those are state compensated offices.
Okay. So, this wouldn't have any effect on?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good.
Anything else? Ms. Hurley, should we take a consensus?
You can. The next step would be to put it on for introduction, and we can do that the next meeting.
Okay. Should we take a consensus?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to add?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your next open work session is on the proposed park development plans for Cove Road Beach property, and we have Mr. Steve Miller.
Mr. Vice President, members of the council.
Good morning. It is still morning.
Good morning.
State, your name and position, please, for the record?
My name is Brock Parker. I'm with Parker and Associates in Salisbury.
Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks Tourism for Wycomico County. I figured today would be a good day to talk about the beach.
Yes. Wishful thinking.
Yeah, I'm going to allow Mr. Parker to give you the overview. I will just say, just for context, we had purchased a few years back the property adjacent to the Cove Road Beach. We've been working, over the last year, we've been working, as we got funds, we've been working with Mr. Parker, and then also had a number of public meetings on the West Side, and have been working with the West Side Task Force to get feedback as to how we integrate the existing beach property with the new property that we acquired. So, this is kind of the tail end of that process, as we've gone through some meetings, gotten a lot of public feedback, and we've kind of amended the plan as we've gone. So, Mr. Parker's going to give you an overview of where we currently are, and from this point, we hope to continue to move the project forward.
Great. Thank you, Steve. When Steve and I, our kids are seemingly parallel tracks in, you know, football and soccer and stuff, we chat and jaw a lot. When he asked me to help him out with Cove Road Beach, I was really excited. It was one of the many times I say my job is really cool, because I get to get involved in things that are really kind of meaningful to me. I mean, I remember going to Cove Road Beach when my 21-year-old was in a car carrier. You know, I've seen the struggle, or not necessarily struggles, but the issues that Cove Road Beach has had throughout its life. You know, whether it's neighbors staking their claim, building bulkheads, whether it's parking down the road, whether it's, you know, the host of issues that a public park like this has. So, when Steve approached me, I jumped at the chance to kind of take this job over and make it the best I possibly could. But we kind of immediately recognized that there were three real areas of concern, three hurdles, that we really had to surround as best we could on this. And one was the community, the actual patrons of Tiaskin, the ones that live around this area, namely along Cove Road, or, you know, the other neighbors within this community. The second was the environment. You know, with this thing being so close to the Chesapeake Bay, so close to tidal waters, wetlands, et cetera, we had to really be diligent in our concerns of how we're going to affect this with respect to the environment. And the third is the function. The obvious goal here is to provide a safe and stable means to park the people that are coming here to enjoy this beach. What precipitated this discussion, really, is there are two homes that were in this area as you come down Cove Road off to the right, or, you know, north of the property. These homes historically flooded. They were constantly being repaired. FEMA, I don't want to say condemned them, but they kind of bought them out. The county then jumped in and purchased these. These homes have recently been demolished, leaving open this ground for an obvious expansion of the park. So, in order to kind of address the community aspects of it, that was kind of our first order of business. We met with the West Side Task Force, fantastic agency, or not agency, or organization of citizens. I mean, they received us well. They had a lot of really good input. We tweaked the plan back and forth after several meetings with them. We then went to a couple of town halls with the overall community of Tiaskin, of the West Side area, the affected citizens in this area. Again, tweaking the plan, moving forward, you know, trying to make this the best we can. Obviously, you know, there's concerns of, you know, attracting people to the beach. There's concerns with safety, lights, trash, that kind of thing. And through discussions with them, and through discussions with, say, the sheriff's department, through discussions with lighting contractors, environmentalists, I think we've pretty much threaded that needle fairly well here. The second concern that I mentioned was the environmental aspects, the fact that we are so close to wetlands, the fact that we are building impervious this close in the critical areas. We are managing 100% of our impervious surfaces that we're constructing. Not only are we doing that, but we're also capturing the existing impervious. So, there's a lot of existing asphalt out there now. Cars are now really parking over on the grassed area behind the fences, so they're dripping their, whatever's coming out of their cars, they're chewing up the dirt, there's sediment runoff, all of that stuff. So, we're kind of mitigating what's there now, as well as managing what we're proposing as well. In doing so, we have the state of Maryland's ESDs, the gravel wetlands, that capture, treat, and discharge the runoff in a safe and stable form. With respect to the wetlands, we're only disturbing the area of the wetlands in one location, and that is along our stormwater pipe outfall. Obviously, with stormwater management, you have to collect the water and route it safely to a discharge location. That is in the little creek that's between the existing cove and the peninsula off to the north or the west. And the third aspect of this would be the form and function of the park itself. So, we recognize that we've kind of, I don't want to say lost, but the southern aspect, as you come down Cove Road to the left, that claim has been restaked by that neighbor there, and been building the bulkhead, the big giant red sign. I don't know if you've been out there, but basically, that's where we used to go with our kids, down in that area with the peninsula and the little creek bed, but that's been lost. That's really taken a lot away from the cove. It's taken a lot of area for the Wycomico County citizens to enjoy. So, what this has done, this purchase, it's now extended the Cove Road in the opposite direction, probably four or five times the length of the beach that we have now. So, what we've done is we've clustered our parking at the end of Cove Road, where the parking lot is now, and we've directed our patrons over to the north, where there are no neighbors, where there are really no one. We're kind of getting the beach enjoyment areas farther away from the community of Cove Road itself, as well as giving them a much larger expanse to enjoy when they come and enjoy this park. So, you'll see that just the massive amount of area that we're getting and we're servicing, there's an existing bridge now that goes over that little gut. We've looked at that. We're going to maintain that, probably put some railings, but basically make that just for pedestrians, maybe a golf cart or something to pick up trash, but we're basically going to make it foot traffic only. In an effort to increase the form and function, again, we're going to build a couple of little gazebos, you know, some picnic tables. Can't really do much there because of the FEMA regulations. You don't, we can't build any formal structures. Everything we have to do has to be nailed down, and water has to flow through or under it, which really limits us to just kind of open-wall gazebos and stake down picnic tables. There is a nice fishing pier there now. Our proposal there is to keep that, rehab it as necessary, and allow that for use for the patrons of the park. So, I think this is really expanding the area that's available for people to go out and enjoy this area, as well as the amenities that we're providing. We're giving a little bit of shade through the gazebos and the plantings, as well as the picnic tables to kind of sit, and we're kind of, you know, with a consolidated trash collection, with a consolidated areas of refuge, I think we're making a real vast improvement of the park. And then finally, we're also providing a significant increase of ADA accessibility throughout the park. So, you'll see we have three, they're going to be bulkheaded, or like a kind of a dock style, walkways down to viewing areas, down closer to the water, as well as the bulkhead on, as you look up here, that the plan left, the bulkhead around the peninsula, if you will. So, as far as the development goes, we have submitted the preliminary critical areas plans, as well as the construction drawings of stormwater management plans, to both agencies in charge of reviewing it. We've got back relatively minor comments. Obviously, with critical areas, it's probably going to Annapolis. There's a little more discussion to have there, but I think we've done the best we could with regards to critical areas, but with stormwater management, we've kind of hit that one on the nose and have actually submitted formal construction drawings in that regard. So, development is going. I think what we're showing you here is absolutely realizable, because it's on the construction drawings, and the reports are written and reviewed. So, I guess that being said, if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to help you.
Counsel?
How's the dunes holding up?
Right. The little dunes that you get trampled on? I was just curious. I mean, I haven't been out there in a minute.
They probably need some further attention. I think what we did a couple of years ago with the breakwaters project, I know that was, folks had a lot of opinions on that, but I think that helped to preserve what existed.
Right.
And then we've had some plantings there, some of those through nature or whatever else have disappeared, so that's something we're going to have to continue to monitor. But I do think the dunes, they're holding up okay, but you can, bad storms definitely take a toll.
Is there anywhere in this plan that we're going to bring in, I don't know if we can, but bring in sand?
So, well, if I could go back for a second, with respect to the dunes, our proposal here is, we don't propose to disturb the dunes. We're going to leave, we're only going to disturb the area. We need to build a parking lot in the stormwater, but we are channelizing the foot traffic over the dunes in the stabilized walkways themselves. So, we're hoping with the three, which is probably more than we really need, but we're really trying to channelize that foot traffic to get over the dunes, onto the beach via the walkways that we're providing. As far as the sand there goes, it's decent sand throughout. We are going to be building, FEMA wants us to get our parking lot up as high as possible, for obvious reasons. So, we are bringing that in as high as we can to get it up, so it's not inundated with, you know, your storms and sea level rises and that stuff.
So, we're going to work with the existing sand. The other question is, on the side that does not have the breakaways, the wave breaks, the side that is all the new section, how's that, is that, there's a dock in there, I think, right?
Yes.
Like, there's a dock, like, literally in the water there. Is that dock going to stay there, or is it still there? Maybe it's, maybe somebody took it out.
If you look at the plan left.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that dock. I'm talking about.
Next to the breakwaters.
I'm talking about the dock literally under the water.
Yeah. You can see the piers themselves.
Yeah.
The left of that breakwater there. If you, I mean, if the budget permits, our proposal is to get those out of there, because we recognize that as a potential.
And in that section, I know I've got a couple of questions, but, and then on that section where the bridge is, how's the erosion holding up? Because I know, like, because we've got the new wave breaks here, and it's been a year or a couple of years now since they've been up, I'm just curious on how the water's cutting the sand there now.
Yeah. We've, we haven't seen any negative impacts on that. That bridge has been there for quite a while.
The bridge?
The footbridge over from the.
No, no, I'm not talking about the footbridge. I'm talking about, you got the, you got the new wave breaks, right, for the beach, the existing beach, from the wave break, when you're facing the water on the right, to the stream. I'm just curious on how the erosion is with the sand there.
What impacts it's had on the existing beach.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's like the, before we put the breakwaters in, I think you're going to have an erosion problem there as well, over time.
Right.
I will say in the area that we did put the breakwaters in, if you look at pictures now versus what it was, it's actually trapping sand in, so we're retaining more of the sand in those areas. But if you're talking further down the beach, I don't have the numbers, but I think over time, like the other, that.
Yeah. I'm just saying, because I know that the new breakwaters will, I mean, we don't know how the water's going to cut it.
Right. How it's going to impact the other.
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Right? So, I didn't know if you, like, it's been two or three years since that's happened, so I was just asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just other questions. The infrastructure that we're putting in there is kind of hard to read the map, I guess, and you mentioned the roads and the parking lot. Is this impervious surface, or is it?
No, the pavement itself, or the parking lot itself, will be built with standard asphalt.
For what reason?
Basically, the solid cap on top of the pavement is the way we chose to go, just simply because we are providing surface stormwater management, which gives us the same level of, probably a better level of treatment than the pervious asphalt. And when you compare standard asphalt to pervious asphalt, there's a factor of probably three or four times in expense. So, there are budget concerns there as well, to build this all in pervious asphalt. To the west or to the north, where you see there's kind of a bold line, that's the parcel that FEMA has been associated with. They are refusing to allow us to put asphalt in there, so they've asked us to put, use that parking lot area in stone.
And then just as far as the, you know, and not that I want to get into full details, but I always want to make sure that we are continuing to put in the native species and things that are able to handle that. I saw you have the eastern red cedar potentially as a lined around, and I guess is that, or is that with other native grasses that can hold in the moisture, or hold in the soils?
Yeah. So far, the species, the number of symbols you see are really basically number of symbols there, used to determine our critical areas requirements or required mitigation. As far as the species themselves go, they'll be selected by somebody a whole lot greener than me. You know, I'm not a landscape architect, but yes, they will be required by critical areas law to be native species, but this selection here is going to be a real tricky one, because you have the brackish water, you have the periodic inundation, you have the constant sunlight, so there's going to be some very careful selection of the species. Where we have now is we're just basically at the numbers level, counting the number of trees versus our area of disturbance, and making sure those numbers can balance out. Once we get those approvals of the number of symbols in the areas, then we'll get into the species selection. But yes, they'll be, they'll be carefully selected for this area, for sure.
Mr. Miller, I'd just say, of course, I defer to you and trust you on a lot of these things, and you always do an amazing job at putting together the outreach and the planning for these. Of course, I always want to make sure that it's, that we're spending our money well and wise, and so, you know, as many of these, I'd rather spend more money at first than having to constantly revisit something over time, again and again, like we did with, say, Barron Creek Road or other situations like that, where I don't want to continue to invest into it. So, yeah, so if that makes a difference on impervious surface or others, I trust you all in the right direction on that. But, yeah, certainly, this is an area that's well within the floodplain. It's going to be underwater many, many times over. I think we just need to be very cautious and thoughtful on how we build around it. But at the same, and then I'll close with, I guess, saying, 35 years ago, that's where I got my, I was seven years old, got my worst sunburn I've ever had. Still think about it every time. See the spots down there. But, yeah, but it's really great to actually see this moving forward. I think it should be really great.
Other comments?
Funding for this. So, we've, council funded in part in last year's budget, and then we also got state grants. So, at this point, I think our intention is to go with the funding that we have, so it's a little over $700,000 to develop it. So, that's our intent, is to carry that as far as we can carry it. So, we're not, we're not requesting any additional funds at this time.
This parking lot, the paved one, that is, because there's already a parking lot there, is it going to be about the same footprint, or is it going to be, or is that the actual is that the actual number of spaces on the picture?
If you look at the plan, the lighter hatching on the, on the right side, the gray, that's your existing lot?
Right.
The darker hatching in the middle, that is the new parking lot, the new asphalt, and then the lighter gray to the left of it, that's the stone area that FEMA's, FEMA's used.
All right, so all of that black is going to be parking lot?
Yes.
Asphalt?
Yes.
That's a lot of asphalt.
You have a lot more parking than you do the beach areas for people to enjoy?
Yeah, there, there's about 18, 18 or so spaces now, at the end of the day, we're about 58, but the cars now are parking throughout the grass, so it's tough to gauge how many cars we're parking now. So I think we are increasing the number of spaces slightly, but we're giving a much more efficient use of that area by striping the spaces and giving them dead-able places to park. But you'll see on the, between the, the Nanticoke River and all areas of our asphalt, we have stormwater management facilities, so each of these areas drain directly into submerged gravel wetlands, which store and treat that water before it's discharged.
Has there ever been any study done to see what the capacity of the beach, how many people, actually the beach will hold, I mean, on a-
Yeah, I don't have-
Any given day, I mean, you know, will it hold 2,000 people, 1,500, 500, what, you know?
We looked at that, there's standards for, like, square footage for, I don't have that number with me, but I could provide that to you if you'd like, but with what we've proposed, the 58 or 60 spots, what we have is sufficient, but I could provide that to you.
Yeah, one of the, that was a big topic of discussion through all the outreach that we've done with the community, and, and if you look at the number of parking spaces that are there now, there's probably 30, 40 cars parked there on average day, so we're going from 30 or 40 to 58, but what we're doing is we're expanding Cove Road several hundred feet down to the north, so we don't, we don't really show that, because we're not doing anything to it, but if you looked at Google Earth on this, we own, I mean, it's 30 acres of ground past here, and it's several more hundred feet of shoreline that, you know, high tide or medium tide.
High tide, how wide's the beach, 10 foot?
Yeah. As wide as it is now, yeah, but, you know, we're, we're giving a lot more, I mean, by a factor of 10, area of people to enjoy, not that they're not trespassing now, but I guess we should say legally enjoy.
And so in, in theory, we'll get the cars off the road and put them in a parking lot?
Yes, right.
Yeah. That might, I don't know if that, I mean, I know they're right, not, not right next to each other, but maybe that might help brewing point situation, I know that the Nanticoke Wharf Road gets a god awful amount of cars packed up when it's a nice, when it's a beautiful day in the summer, and you can just look at the license plate, they're from all the surrounding states, they tend to know where to go, but that's, they're not in the parking lot, they're down the main road parked, so, you know, folks were, could carpool together, or they could drop a car off, maybe up a little farther up north, maybe that would help with that situation, too.
Yeah, I, I think that's true, and Brock mentioned it in his presentation, but I think one of the appealing parts of this is pushing people away from the neighbors, I know that's been a problem in the past, with the beach being so small, people trespass, especially at high tide, they're going to find other places to go, and they end up on private property, and the way this works out is, you know, we're going to make both parking and the foot traffic to go in the direction that's away from the neighbors, so we hope that will, will help, in addition to providing more access.
Are there, are there no parking signs in front of these people's houses?
We have signs along the road that say no parking, because it was a problem at one time where people were parking along the road, and that was preventing, you know, emergency vehicles from getting through, and sometimes blocking private driveways, so we do have signs along the roadway that say no parking on the side.
Is there a timeline?
I'll defer to Brock.
You give him the hard question?
If, if all goes well, I think we're looking, not this summer, but next summer, being ready to go.
Yeah, I keep asking Brock that every time I see him, but how long?
As I said, right now, we are in for, with the P1, an actual real, full set of construction drawings, review of the construction drawings and the stormwater management. The next facet, or really the other bigger facet, is the critical areas, and critical area staff has been real good to deal with, so we're, we're kind of working together to get the best and most amenable thing we've got here, with something like this in the buffer, critical areas is really designed to whack you with, trying to force you out to not do anything in the buffer, but with tidal waters directly behind and in front, this entire project is in the buffer. So we're, we're working together to come up with an amenable mitigation plan and plantings that'll, that'll work, but, I mean, I'm confident we can get something through, it's just, it's not as easy as the engineering, because engineering is just numbers, this is more qualitative.
The, the teepee, that you say that's going to be rehabbed?
Pardon?
The, the teepee, on the bottom left of the diagram?
Yeah, that, that's not that old, so I think it was built right after Hurricane Sandy, so I think that's in decent shape, I think one of the challenges that Brock's addressed here is that, just providing access to it.
Okay.
Because they used to have steps that they would put out, the, the old homeowner had steps there, so you can see there's a pathway there, but I don't anticipate having to do much to it itself. We've kicked around ideas about, you know, bumpers or railings or different things, there's a little lift there as well, but-
Jeff, I got one thing. That, that pier is a fishing pier, is there, are we going to work with DNR to make it a free fishing pier?
Yeah, so we've, we've made that inquiry, what they recommended to me was, when the project's done, to make that official request, they said they can't really approve that till this is done, so we've, we've laid that out, and we'll do that when the-
And that includes crabbing?
Um, we'll, we'll make that request.
All right, thank you.
That was one of the requests of the residents.
Okay.
One more thing, while it's on my mind, the, I did see on, on the Eastern Shore delegation's call on Friday, the Secretary of Natural Resources did mention that we're finally, after the one standing, one county in Maryland that does not have a state park, Wycomico County, is finally getting a state park, I know that was a big commitment from Governor Moore, so they did make an announcement that it was going to be on the Nanticoke River, 450 acres, I don't know where that's at, I don't know if it's down there, hopefully it's in coordination to all of this, but, but that was still great to hear, so.
Yeah, that was, that was news, news to me as well, I'm looking forward to getting some of those answers myself.
Yeah. All right.
More questions from the council?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Anything more to add? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
The next work session is on the capital improvement program, and up first would be the airport.
Now?
Good afternoon by six minutes.
Yep.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Tony Rudy, Airport Director.
So, so the CIP has some capital projects in it for the airport, a, a good majority of the funding is looking for, especially in fiscal '26, is a federal grant, there is a couple of projects that would be all Pago for the county, that's hangar roof replacements, doing some, adding a canopy to the parking lot exit, so that during rain events, there is some space to protect the people who are paying to exit.
Actually, Pam, can I make a correction?
That's the second part.
Yes.
And the first part is, is the second lane, sorry.
Yes.
We had to split it into two years due to funding issues, so there's, we, as you're well aware, we have, you know, set times that we have, unlike a BWI that has a constant flow of people, we have kind of set times when we have people coming out of our parking lot, and so the one exit does get very crowded, so we're looking at putting a second exit in fiscal '26, in fiscal '27, we're looking to add a canopy to protect for rain, since it's a total Pago funded project, at this point in time, we had to split that into two pieces.
When you say Pago, due to the fact that the airport has been, for the most part, an enterprise fund, is that coming out of airport funds, or is that coming out of a general, general fund?
Pago is coming out of the general fund for, so if you see, so like when we did solid waste, you see enterprise fund as the funding source, that is their Pago funding, this Pago funding is general fund, and most likely, I, I can't remember if it's this audit or the next audit, we will have the airport be like Rec Parks and Tourism and the Civic Center, they can't afford their, they can't afford their depreciation as an enterprise fund, so they will no longer be an enterprise fund, but basically, like the Civic Center, like Rec and Parks, they have sufficient, for the most part, money to cover their operating costs, they don't have the funds to do their capital costs, the cost of a capital, to maintain capital at a airport is significant, and so, so just for clarity's sake, when you're seeing a line item that says Pago, that is general fund appropriation money, if you see a line that says enterprise fund, that is Pago funding coming from the fund balance of another fund, and that's either primarily going to be solid waste or tourism.
Thank you.
So, any questions that council may have about the airport?
So, obviously, we always want to try to get another airline in, are any of these requests hinged on whether or not we'll get an airline in or not, if we don't have another exit, is that going to say to an airline, we're not taking this serious?
Now, the issue we have right now with the, with the single exit, and it's an automated system, is if something happens in that one lane, so say right now, we have, you know, 50, 50 passenger seats on the airplane, so we could have up to 50 people, realistically, it's going to be less than that, but we could have them all exiting or wanting to exit a lot at the same time, and if there's an issue with either someone, you know, paying their, paying their fee to get out, or they have a lost ticket, you know, there is a means to contact someone at that, at that exit, it rings a phone number where we have a service that answers the phone and walks them through it, if there's a mechanical issue, then we have to get someone out to the parking lot, so all of that is going to back up all the rest of the traffic behind them, so this added lane, which will be right next to it, will give people, will basically have another option for people to get out of the lot and pay their fee, we have experienced in the past, some people, you know, being jammed up and actually driving over the curb and leaving, so we don't get a fee, so this will help with that.
Okay. Just, just a question, how do we arrive at the amounts for these projects, have we gotten any type of bids, or?
No, so these are estimates based, I worked with, with GMB on estimating the cost for design and then for the actual work.
And then other projects, we work with other consultants that we have to get estimates for the cost, for, you know, for air traffic and control equipment, or stuff that we've already bid out in the previous year, giving us an estimate as to how much it's going to cost us to the next part.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, as we've seen, we get into projects like this, and then by the time we get to the shovel in the ground stage, it's $150,000 more money, or whatever, or 2 million, so.
We do our best estimate at the point in time that we are creating these, and it's a-
Yeah, I understand.
Estimates are-
Yeah.
Estimates.
We're good, but we can't predict the future.
I could bring out my magic eight ball and see what it says.
Right. Ms. Hurley?
So Pam, you were explaining the Pago is actually coming out of the general fund, correct?
Correct.
On the summary by department, you're showing the funding for airport under enterprise, should we move that up to under the general fund?
I don't have anything under enterprise, everything is under Pago.
It's-
It's all Pago?
It's all Pago, you just need to put a line across.
So, can I show you what I have?
So this is all Pago.
We're here, enterprise, airport, should we move that?
So, until it actually happens, it's not happened yet, when I issue an audit that has it moved, I will move that, at the moment, it is still listed, at this current-
So we have to list it as enterprise?
At this current moment, it is still an enterprise fund, when the audit gets issued and it has moved, that is when it moves.
Okay.
At this moment, we have not moved it as an enterprise fund, because we haven't issued an audit yet, so.
Yeah, I just have one more clarification, because I think you've already said it, so the $432,000 is for the exit?
Correct.
And then next year, the canopy is the $135,000?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and that is just adding another lane, right?
The $432 is adding another lane, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's adding the lane, adding the equipment to be able to, you know, you have to have the equipment to then be able to, yeah.
It costs a lot of money, and I, hopefully this is an overestimate.
We can hope.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's it.
On the air traffic control equipment, we got $15,000 Pago, $70,000 state grant, 1.26 million federal grant, in light of what we've been all told by the state and appears by the federal government, how, how certain are these grants?
MAA seems pretty consistent with funding, so they, they haven't been an issue in the past, several years ago, they did stop funding soft costs for projects to design, but they, they are still fully funding the hard costs for, for the percentage.
And the total you're wanting to take out for Pagos, 9, 9.6, is that right? Am I looking at the right place?
For fiscal '26, it's $1.4 million for the airport, the 9.6 might be for all departments? Yes, 9.6 is for all departments.
Okay, I was looking at one spot, sorry.
So 1.4 is the airport's share of that 9.6 million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
More questions from council?
All right, thank you.
This is the library.
Yes. Thank, thank you all for coming. We've got Seth.
Here I am.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Seth Hershberger, Director, Wycomico Public Library.
All right.
So, for the library, it is a, I'm trying to find my sheet, sorry, for whatever reason, I have-
I have it.
It's not coming up in the order that I wanted to see it, there it is, okay. So there's basically three projects, as council's well aware, the biggest project is the renovation of Shoemaker Pond, we're looking at over a two, a three-year period, doing about, let's see, we're looking, we're looking at a $13 million project for that, for that, but a good chunk of those funds are coming either from state grant, or the, the library is working on doing a capital campaign to help raise funds for that. Fiscal '26, the, the amount that we're requesting for, from the general fund is $866,000 to move that project forward, the other two projects on the list are further down in the timeline, they are looking at doing, you know, once we've moved the downtown library, where can we put kind of a neighborhood library in the future, right now, that's looking at fiscal '29 and fiscal '30, we're looking at possibly building a garage warehouse space for their bookmobile, mobile learning lab, potentially on our Parsonsburg location. Did I state all that correctly?
Yeah, very good, mhm. I'm, I'm pleased to report to council today, if you saw the capital budget come out from the state last Wednesday, that we are included there as a line item for Wycomico Public Library in the governor's budget, to provide the amount of our full request, the first disbursement of that amount, which is just over $3 million from the state for the renovation of that facility. Meanwhile, thanks to the council's providing funds for design, we're well along in that process now towards being in a position when we know for certain that the state will fund their portion of the project, when the legislature approves the capital budget, that we could be in a position shortly thereafter to put the project out to bid, so that we, we can get started right away in the new fiscal year when the funds are available. Yes, sir.
Got a question, Seth, about the garage, the warehouse?
Yeah.
The state grant, do they have requirements on the size of that garage, or is that can be up to us?
They have requirements for one of our vehicles, one of the bookmobiles that we have, we have two large coaches, they, they require one, because it was funded through a particular agency that focuses on providing service to rural areas, that that vehicle, I think, is a show of good faith, that we are using it to reach out to rural areas, that it be parked outside of the city limits, that's our only requirement with respect to that. We're losing some storage space when we move from downtown to the Shoemaker Pond facility, so that's something we need to make up, is a place to house our mobile services.
How large of a building are you looking?
We're looking at large enough to park two vehicles, which are both large coaches, and then also to store the mobile services collection, they don't put it all on the vehicle, they rotate it, so some space to store library materials, and- materials and office space for the manager of mobile services there. So, not a large space, and also not a fancy space. We're thinking of a pole barn-type construction.
Going to be one heck of a pole barn.
Yeah.
Nice pole barn.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Our estimates were based on it being a pretty simple, you know, architecturally very basic, not intended for public access.
Absolutely, okay.
So, you answered my first question, the status of the state grant, which came out. But I see a portion of that grant is FY '27.
Correct.
Again, in light of what we've been hearing for well over a year, how secure do you think that is?
If you look at the capital budget that was released, it shows the amount that would be dispersed this year, and along with the other libraries that are receiving funds as well. It totals $7.5 million, which is the exact amount mandated by state statute that be provided in the capital budget for public library projects. So, we're within that mandate, and I am going to be in Annapolis when they have hearings to advocate that they fully fund the mandate, but they would have to revisit the state statute in order to not provide the $7.5 million, of which we are a part. The capital budget for FY '26 also has listed right there in the line item that we're planning to come back in FY '27 and request 3.3 million. They know this is phase one of the project, they know this is really just the first disbursement of a project that needs to be funded through to completion. We'll have to go back and do the same request, apply for the same grant, but I do like that they know that we're coming back. And that being included in the governor's budget was the last really big hurdle that we cleared just last week.
The biggest impact is, is that because we got the first year of funding, they would have to kind of eliminate, it would be, it would be a harder project for them to eliminate because they've already given us the first share. If they hadn't ever given us the first share, it's easier, it's easy to say no, but since they've already given us the first share, it's a harder project to say no to. They still have that ability, but it's a harder project to say no to because they have already made a commitment that this is a worthy project for Wycomico County and thus a use of state funds.
That sounds pretty relevant.
They don't want to be blamed for a half-built library.
So...
I know it's not on the CIP Parsonsburg Library, for those that are following that.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for your interest. Also, thank you, James Nguyen, for your interest in the project, and I'll get back to you on a time that you can come and see the progress.
Absolutely, thank you.
It's not on the CIP because it's already been funded, and the work is already underway in the current fiscal year. We're well along in the process. Of course, design is complete, and the demolition is complete there at the site. They've done some additional work, we've had some delays with materials, and also with getting approvals from the Health Department on the location of the septic field, because it is a septic, well-inseptic there at the property, but we're still on track to complete the project this year, to be open by this summer is our goal. And I'm excited that the east side of the county will have a really great example of what a public library can be, even though it's small, it's going to be beautiful, not just the building itself, but also the grounds, then the acre that's there.
The Health Department issue, I think I asked you about this, and I forgot. What's the problem there?
Just that we had drawings that showed where the location of the septic field was, so our architect designed a, some features on the site, a rain garden that overlapped with the possible location of the septic field.
So, is it a holdup, or?
It's a holdup because we need permission from the Health Department to proceed with our plans.
Has it been submitted?
Yeah, we're working on it, but it just takes time.
Okay. I saw a hand go up on the back row there.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come up and say something?
Yes, thank you.
I was going to say, this was planned.
I didn't know he was going to be here.
Our next work session is with our health officer.
Trying to get him in the middle of this so we get it done.
Yeah.
So, what happened was, there's a rain garden feature, so when it was put in, it dug up the dirt and has now infringed on the 10,000 square feet that is required to be established for the SRA. It also now is a water collection feature, so that means there needs to be a 25-foot setback from that to an SRA area. So, that, again, infringes on the already established area. So, now, we have to go see what other construction might have occurred in the area, compacted it, or altered the established SRA, and we'll have to establish a new 10,000 square foot area.
Septic reserve area, SRA.
Yeah, reserve area, yeah, I know what that is.
Just so that maybe the public doesn't know what SRA stands for.
I mean, would it speed things up to reduce the size of the rain garden, or?
Yeah, we're willing to modify our plans. I have a meeting with the architect this afternoon to talk about the best way forward. We don't want this to delay things too much, but...
We're talking about the highest spot in Wycomico County, Parsonsburg, and that's historically...
Just needs to be mapped out and plotted.
Correct, you know, so, I mean, to let something like that hold up is, seems a little out there. I think we need to get it resolved sooner than later.
Yeah, we're committed to doing whatever we have to do to be compliant.
Any more questions from council?
I just want to say, Seth, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
Thanks, thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
You guys have anything to add?
Nope, but this is the next one on your agenda, so. So, the next one on the agenda is the Health Department, Matthew McConaughey, Health Officer. So, 2026, the majority of the funds there, actually, all the funds that we're requesting for the Health Department, is for the actual renovation of the Verizon building. So, that is, we're in the process of, right now, getting plans created. We have funding in '25 for that. Those plans are not complete yet, so this is an estimate. This does, so when we get those plans, and we look at those plans in comparison to needs, wants, and kind of desires, we may have to make some adjustments, but right now, this has in there concept of possibly putting in a second elevator and/or expanding the elevator that we currently have, because we're, the elevator that we currently have is relatively small. Primarily, correct me if I'm wrong, primarily, the first floor is going to be the access floor for the public, so the elevator would not have to, on a daily basis, be taking public upstairs, but we still obviously have to have it compliant in ability to utilize it for the facility. So, their original request to administration had the elevator out three to four years, and we decided that that didn't seem appropriate to renovate the whole building and then tear it apart again to do the elevator. So, we combined those projects into fiscal '26 because it makes more sense if no one's in there to tear it apart at one time versus have the elevator be out of service once you're already in the building. Two of the out-year projects are for Fritz. Those are things that do need to be done if we ultimately are keeping Fritz, or if we're keeping Fritz for another 15 years. But if we ultimately, in the next two or three years, find the funding to expand the campus like we've talked about, and put some of the Fritz stuff at the Verizon location, then those would be things that would be transitioned to other needs, but we wanted to put them on here because the flooring at Fritz, some of it's original to the building. And so...
Is it holding up?
It's old floors.
Yeah, definitely needs replaced. There are issues, and same with HVAC. We constantly dealing with fluctuating temperatures in the building.
So, again, because at this moment, we don't have on the plans when we're looking to expand the Verizon location to take those services on, those are on here. But as I've stated before, a plan can be changed, and if we make our changes such that, you know, Fritz's stuff is moving in five years, we would not sink $1.6 million, or not $1.1 million into Fritz if, in five years, we're going to be out of there. Any other questions on Health Department?
I got a, the funds that we're getting from the lease is $54,000?
I didn't bring those numbers with me, so I honest, that's one number that doesn't stick in my head.
I guess my question is, where's the money?
Those money, those funds go into the general fund.
Could they be used to offset the cost of the building renovation?
Well, I mean, any general fund money is available for us to do renovations, so those are revenues that are part of the general fund, which then flow into the availability of Pago funding.
You got it under general obligation bond. You're bonding that money. Well, I think what Jeff's meaning, could we reduce the amount of the bond by using the revenue from the Verizon building?
Well, I mean, that is an option that we could take. We also are looking, I mean, we're looking at a total of 9 million, I think you said $9 million worth of Pago funds already spoken for, and so the question becomes is, how much can our fund balance handle? Because that's all coming from fund balance. So, how much can our fund balance handle when we're finally, when we prepare the budget for you guys? We will look at that and say, okay, maybe the fund balance can handle $10 million, and we only go to bond for this project, $1 million, or something like that. So, those are all the considerations that finance and administration go through during the budget process. Right now, this is our best estimate, and it's also, it's, instead of doing 10 projects that we're bonding for, you take some of the bigger projects and bond one project and do the 10 projects with Pago. So, that is, that's the strategy that I have taken as your finance director. Instead of having to manage 10 projects under a bond, we manage one or two, maybe three or four, projects under a bond versus, you know, half the money being bonded and half the money being Pago. Sometimes, it's cleaner to put all of the one project under a bond and all, you know, other smaller projects then under the Pago.
Yeah, just looking at roughly $50,000 a month for two years, that's $1.2 million, so that would be...
That has, that will, it is, funds that have, will have, will be reflected in, we didn't have it very long when we were doing the June 2024 fund balance, but we made considerable, we're doing considerable worth of fund balance this fiscal year. $10 million of it is going to the schools, so that, those funds that are coming in for that building are helping us offset the $10 million that we're doing for the schools this year. So, it's a balancing act, and sometimes I know there's been discussions, well, let's just set this money aside to reserve it for this. Well, sometimes, it's easier just to use the money that you currently have than creating another pot to have to keep track of. These funds came in, and we use them for our current needs, and thus, we will have future needs that we will have to fund.
But doesn't it show a true or cost of a project if you're taking monies that you're earning from that source, i.e. the Verizon building, and using it to offset renovations? You can say, you know, so this project's only cost us this much because we use the revenues that we got from the rent.
I mean, we, we could do that, but then...
It's a whole county, and the whole county pays everything, but it just seems to me like it shows a true or cost of what a project is.
We can say, I can easily show that ultimately, the county collected this amount of money, and we are renovating to this level. Do we want to put those restrictions on ourselves when we have needs in the fiscal year that the money came in? My recommendation would be no. My recommendation is, is you use the funds that you have to pay the bills that you have, and then you look at your future revenues to see what bills you have for there. We can easily equate and say, this, by buying this building, we collected this amount of money for the general fund, and ultimately, we're spending this amount of money out to renovate the building, but to actually make an accounting segregation of that would not be my recommendation.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yep, good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hurley, it seems we are at lunch.
You can recess if you want, or I believe we do have folks here from the Board of Education if you want to keep working. They're your options. Miss Lunch.
Yeah.
Half hour, 20 minutes?
Let's do 20 minutes.
So, you want to recess?
Yeah, we'll recess for 20 minutes. We're now reconvening as the Wycomico County Council for Legislative Session 2025-02 for January 21st, 2025. Mrs. Hurley?
So, the next work session is with the Wycomico County Board of Education, and this is our quarterly work session.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
State your name and position, please, for the record.
David Plots, Vice Chair of the Board.
Mike Stoffler, Superintendent of Schools.
Brian Rigger, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Dr. Briggs, Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you.
We're also going to be joined potentially by some staff that are out in the audience today. We have Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services. We also have, from our planning and construction team, Liesel Ashby and Kayla Campbell. And we also have, as our Director of Finance and Comptroller, Jesse Reed.
And we do have some folks on Zoom, yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
All right, great. So, just a couple of quick updates, because we do have Alex Donahue from the IAC and staff here today, which we're excited about, and they'll be joining us in just a few moments. But there were a couple of council requests that we wanted to touch base in our work session today. The first being just an update on the blueprint and legislation, and some things from the governor's budget, and we'll ask Dr. Briggs, our blueprint coordinator, to kind of take it away.
Dr. Stoffler, the question that was posed was, do we anticipate any state legislation pertaining to the Kerwin or blueprint plan? And the easy answer is, yes, we do. The complicated part is, what exactly will that look like, and how will we be impacted here? And we honestly don't know. No official legislation has been shared with us yet or presented in Annapolis, but we've been meeting with our delegation. We had our, we already met with our delegation, and we, that communication continues. I know Dr. Stoffler's received a couple of calls already from members of the delegation, and we're keeping a close eye on what's going on, and they know to reach out to us if we have any questions or the potential impact. So, again, we know something's coming, but we don't know what. And based upon the lack of revenue, you know, some of the phrases that are thrown out there, there's going to be a pause or a reduction, so we'll see how it impacts things. And we'll definitely keep the council posted as well.
Keep hearing pause, rollback, those terms, so...
I believe those, I think the governor's saying there's a four-year pause, delay. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that was specific to teacher collaboration time, which there was some funding that was tied to that as well, so a pause on that. Also, community school expansion. Most of our schools are already community schools, so it has a minimal impact on us, but those are two of the things that were mentioned in the governor's budget proposal.
Yeah, definitely, we, we're very appreciative of our delegation, so they were very supportive in meeting with us prior to the holidays and the legislative breakfast, and spent a good bit of time just talking through with us about blueprint, some of the challenges that we were facing. Think of blueprint, there are so many moving pieces to that large legislation, so we're anticipating that as we move forward in this legislative session, they'll be pausing certain aspects of it, other aspects that we have already implemented, they may slow down a little bit, so forth and so on. So, it's certainly something that we're watching very closely. The other update the council was asking about was regarding just our multilingual learner or English language learner population. So, behind the agenda, you have our most recent numbers as of September 30th of this school year in our enrollment count. I will say, since that time, we've enrolled about 50 to 60 more multilingual learners than you see on that, on that column there, but essentially, it's about a 25% increase in enrollment. But essentially, it's about a 25% increase in enrollment growth just since last year regarding that. And then also, you can take a look below at the table that indicates where we were as of five years ago, all the way through this school year. So even since this, this time in September 30th, we had 2,273. We're now a little over 2,300 regarding our total multilingual learner population. Obviously, we, it's one of the fastest growing staff vacancies that we're trying to fill in our school system as these numbers continue to increase for us.
What is the ratio of the English, if I have the term correctly, English language teachers to the English language learners? Do we know the approximate ratio?
It's close to like one to 60.
One to 60? Wow.
Yeah. Don't quote me on that, although I know it's getting recorded, so I guess you can. But it's, the ratio is not where we want it or need it, correct?
It's high. What, what would be a good ratio to, a realistic gold to shoot for?
Answer that?
A lot less than that.
I mean, obviously, instead of having English language learner teachers float throughout classrooms to provide hours throughout the week, ideally, you would want to have an English language learner teacher in each classroom where they're directly working with the student, all of the students, all of the time in a, in a much smaller population. So, you know, to, to do that, you'd, you'd have to do the math there, but obviously, we're probably nowhere near where we would ideally be able to, need to be to meet the needs that we're seeing.
Do you offer any incentives for your current teachers who basically just teach English to learn another language to become a multilingual teacher?
The incentives are we provide professional development opportunities to help them do their job better, right? Not necessarily that they're learning a different language, but that they're learning skills to make accommodations so that those students can learn content provided to them in a, in a different language.
You don't have any teachers that teach, that know just English, the language, and then go and learn another?
We have very few bilingual teachers.
Is that right?
Yeah. Most of our bilingual teachers or multilingual teachers are teaching a foreign language.
And we see now that the most prominent language of student, of the students that we're teaching is actually not Spanish, it's Haitian Creole.
I guess folks on, there might be watching from home or whatever, can't, maybe can't see all the numbers here, but just to be clear, you're, this is, the numbers are pretty astounding with what you presented. That's 2020, 21 year, 1,143 to now 2,273. So with the ones you've mentioned there, that's more than doubled now, I guess, 102% increase as you've noted. How many languages are spoke in Wacomiko County schools?
Last time I believe I got that information, we had 27.
Dialects on top of that, I guess that's additional 20.
Correct. And I know that we're, we're now about 15% of our student, overall student population, about 15% are multilingual learners.
Overall student population's about 15,000?
Little over.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
Any other questions?
Will certainly be hearing more from us about the need for support. So we appreciate that question and this is good information for you to be able to see as, as maybe, you know, budget requests and other things are made from us regarding that. It's certainly a need that we see increasing drastically here in our county. And as you can see from that, that one statement there, we had the highest growth percentage in the entire state of Maryland in Wacomiko County from last year to this year.
Okay, all right.
With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rigger and I believe Mrs. Ashby will be joining us.
Sure. Just a quick update on Fruitland Primary, where things stand there before we turn things over to our friends from the IAC. Fruitland Primary continues to move forward. We are still looking forward to breaking ground this summer on that replacement school project. As I'm sure you've heard, we're looking to do a forward funding arrangement with county government as the funding scheme from the IAC has modified quite a bit. We'll still be getting those funds that we expect from the IAC, but perhaps over a greater number of years. So we'll be looking for the county to assist with some forward funding that would then be paid back from the state over time. We've met with county executive last week. Things seem to be progressing well in, in that, those conversations and we welcome conversations with the county council as well so that we can continue moving forward with that project. And with that, I'd like to introduce the Executive Director of the IAC, which is the branch of the state government that provides our funding for construction, and that is Alex Donahoe, and he can introduce his team that's with him as well.
To whoever's logged into the Zoom, can you see Alex?
I can't see, they don't have their cameras on.
I see Sean and Melissa, I just don't see Alex.
Hello, everyone. My name's Melissa Wolfong and I am Capital Projects Director at the IAC. Alex is having some connection issues. We've been communicating with him. He appears to have some firewall blocking his ability to connect where he's at. He's going to try connecting on his phone and I will be sharing the presentation. So if we could just, if you wouldn't mind just waiting a moment and see if we can sort this out?
So to fill the void, I will just share that the School Building Commission will be reviewing the construction documents for Fruitland Primary on Thursday, and then the board will be reviewing them in a work session on Tuesday morning. And although we haven't officially presented those numbers to them, we do know that we are still within budget. So that's a, a good sign in us moving forward with the next steps. But all that detail will be shared with the School Building Commission and the board, and then we can send to Ms. Hurley for distribution, that presentation for your consumption as well. And it'll also be on the board's website for the public.
Is he on the bottom?
That's Sean. Not that Sean is not important, but it's not Alex.
Is it, is it worth this, I don't know, as we wait for Alex? And I, I don't know if it's worth going over what the council has in front of here as far as the forward funding and the construction. I don't mind waiting, but we could try to, that's maybe not something that's normally done, so trying to help folks understand how does that work and what's expected.
So council, well, Executive Council, council approval actually did something similar for West Salisbury Elementary, just on a, at a smaller dollar amount. I'm just going off memory. I think it was like six and a half million or 6.6 million. And I do want to distinguish between a true forward funded project, so larger jurisdictions like a Montgomery or a Howard, they will actually build schools and then seek reimbursement from the IAC. We are forward funding just from a cash flow perspective. It's an approved project by the IAC. So then it's just, how long will it take the IAC to reimburse the county for that amount of money? You know, we've already, we've been in communications with all of the elected officials. We've had discussions with the county executive, legislative representatives, you know, that it's a tough spot for Wacomiko to be in because Wacomiko has already funded 20.5, $20.5 million towards this project. And the IAC is, they're also experiencing, what I'll say, is some funding constraints and taking a little bit more formulaic approach to it based upon concentration of poverty and some other items, which if we eventually get on here, they'll be able to, to provide a presentation that they have been making across the state to many jurisdictions. So it's not unique to Wacomiko. It's not unique to the larger jurisdictions. It's now hitting smaller jurisdictions as well. Cecil County's in a similar situation, Worcester County's in a similar situation. So we're working through those pieces. So we've, we've secured Cecil's agreement that's been given to the county executive staff. We also provided them with a copy of the one that was done for West Salisbury. And then we'll be in further discussions on how we update that to meet the project needs of Fruitland Primary. We anticipate, based upon the cash flow analysis that we just received this morning, that the, the lift, so to speak, will be heavier in FY 2027 versus 2026. So it would provide the county a little bit more time to ramp up and figure out how to, how to deal with that. The county's already funded the bulk of the cost share of the project previously. I think we're down to around $8 million to meet the cost share for the county's portion of the entire project, which is a good position to be in. The IAC is still carrying what I'll say is the larger portion of the project. We're just having that cash flow situation, which we will continue to keep that dialogue open to work towards that agreement so that we can move forward with the project. Okay. And Alex is on.
Alex has joined us, so I'll, I will turn it over to him and.
Good afternoon, all. I'm having some connection challenges here. My camera, for some reason, is not working. Can I, can? Sorry, I'm having some connection challenges here. Is the microphone working now?
Yes. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I am unable to get the count, the camera working here. I apologize. I'm offsite here, we're using phone. But first of all, thank you for inviting us to join you. What I'd like to do today is provide some information on a, haha, very good, the laptop is now connecting. Hopefully I will have visibility shortly here.
I am currently unable to share my screen. If someone could authorize me to do that, I could share the presentation.
Okay, one, one minute, they're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. It's hard to be in two places at once, isn't it?
It is, but I appreciate your patience here. All right, I think I'm now connected. Am I visible?
Can you, you should be able to do the screen share now.
Okay, wonderful. There we go.
There we go.
All right. All right, so today I would like to give some background information that I think will be helpful to the county council and the board with regard to what the IAC does, how we do it, the context we're working in, and how that affects Wacomiko County's projects, particularly Fruitland Primary. So I'll start out first today with me are Melissa Wolfong, our Capital Projects Director, and Sean Vorsteg, Capital Projects Manager, assigned to Wacomiko County. Appreciate all of their help and the good coordination with Wacomiko County Public School staff. And I'd like to run through quick orientation and then talk about how this bears on Wacomiko situation. So the next slide, please. The IAC is the state's independent agency responsible for the capital side of school construction and supports school districts with state contributions to capital projects through a number of programs. The program began in 1971 and in 2023 was shifted out of the Maryland State Department of Education, became an independent agency completely. And the next slide gives you a sense of the IAC's mission as well as our vision, which is both to see educationally sufficient school facilities for current and future generations statewide, but also portfolios that are fiscally sustainable. And to that end, the IAC allocates state capital funds for school construction, technical assistance on a number of levels to LEAs around their facilities, portfolio management, work, everything from planning through design, construction and maintenance and operations and eventually decommissioning. And then the IAC also operates two separate assessment programs for facilities. The first is the Maintenance Effectiveness Assessment, which is a sampling of each school district's facilities each year to identify how the LEA is maintaining them, including the state investments in the facilities. And then second, the Condition Assessment, an educational sufficiency review of the school facilities, which is called a statewide facilities assessment. These are two separate programs, two separate teams of assessors, and they generate data each year that are presented in annual reports. Next slide, please. On the funding side, the IAC operates a number of funding programs, the largest being the Capital Improvement Program. Historically, it's been about 250 to 320 million per year. In Fiscal 24, we had a windfall year of additional funding, 485 million, which was great. We were able to accelerate our support for a number of projects. Project-specific grants, these are not block grants. The dollars that each year we can devote from the CIP to each county goes specifically to projects that are approved. They are based on the IAC's discretion because the IAC every year has to balance all of the overwhelmingly large set of requests from all the counties against the limited resources we get through appropriations and against the always changing needs across the state. We do, however, work to keep the allocations and awards as equitable as possible, particularly starting with keeping funding even on a per-student basis as much as possible. But there's a lot of deference given in this process to the local priorities. In Fiscal 26, the CIP target allocation for Wacomiko is about six and a half million. Every year, we set a target allocation because we don't know exactly what appropriations we're going to receive from the General Assembly and the governor until the budget bills passed in May. And so between October, or really even, you know, some of the previous summertime, from October through our final awards in May, we work with a, what we think is a reasonable target. And there is a state and local cost share for the IAC's contributions to projects. And for Fiscal 26, the state cost share for Wacomiko is 95%. That cost share percentage, by the way, is recalculated every two years using a seven-factor formula in our regulations. And the changes that you see, for example, the drop from 98% state share to 95 is a result of changes in the inputs on a number of those factors. Next program is the Enrollment Growth and Relocatable Classrooms Program. Historically, in the last few years, it's been about 40 million a year in appropriations. It's set out in law to go to 80 million next year in Fiscal 27, but for now, we have a governor's marker, proposed budget of about 53 million, which is over the minimum of 40 in the law. Wacomiko does qualify for funding in Fiscal 26. The figure of 2 million is an additional to the CIP amount, and that is our, our estimation currently based on the most recent figures from the governor. And go ahead, the next slide, please. Supporting these two programs are Health, the School Facility Fund, which is a competitive grant program that every school district has the ability to submit projects for. We do a review of all the project requests that come in and we follow a prioritization list, and these are focused on the items that keep school environments healthy, including water quality, indoor air quality, HVAC systems, superheating and cooling, ventilation and roofs, and that's about 45 million per year statewide. School Safety Grant Program has been 10 million additional per year in grants. That's again, a project-specific grants based on statutory criteria. To date, it's been administered by the Center for School Safety, and then the IAC approves the grants recommended. And then finally, what has been a supplemental program or a burst of additional funding over the last four or five years is the Build to Learn Program. And that was created by the General Assembly in 2020 originally to support the blueprint and other expansion of support to school facilities. And that has included a separate 13.8 million dollar allocation available to Wacomiko County that was used for Mar della, and it has to be spent by 2031, which should not be an issue. So these are the main funding programs, and I would note here just to support everyone in, in working through the challenges around. note here, just to support everyone in working through the challenges around Fruitland, that the forward funding by a county of a state share on a project is part of the county's responsibility for funding its operational capital budgets. The state may and does contribute to each, of course. However, the state's support for capital projects is not formulaic. It is something that the IAC has to determine each year based on the appropriation levels that we receive. It makes it very difficult for the IAC to communicate and guarantee because we do not have guaranteed appropriations. And what it means is the IAC will review each project and identify a maximum state award, which is the total state dollar amount that the IAC can contribute to the project. And the IAC delivers the funding in that maximum state award as quickly as possible within the context of the statewide demands. But because the appropriations are not certain until May of each year, the IAC is unable to promise delivery of the maximum state award dollars on any specific timeframe. Sometimes it's two years, sometimes it's four. And in the past, occasionally, for a large project where the amount is significant, especially for smaller counties, it can take five-plus years. Next slide, please. Each project's funding and the maximum state award is calculated through a four-step process, where the IAC starts with the demand that the project needs to satisfy in terms of students. And we look at projected enrollment seven years out in the future because we don't want to calculate a support level for a project and have that project be completed and the doors of the school open five years from now and find out that the school was built to be too small compared to the number of students it needs to serve. So we work with the school district to take a look at their projected enrollment seven years out. We take our eligible enrollment numbers. We use a standardized square footage per student called the Gross Area Baseline Square Footage. That's multiplied by the cost per square foot that the IAC adopts each year, generally in July, based on actual construction cost pricing from the previous year's projects, adjusted for inflation and taking into account national and regional construction cost indices. So that the IAC is funding projects around the state fairly adequately. And we want that to be the state's cost share.
Losing you.
Alex, we're losing your audio.
You could turn off the video. Alex, your audio is still garbled.
I'm assuming you're texting, yeah.
Alex, can you hang up and rejoin?
Let me try again.
Go into the laptop.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Apologize there. I'm having a bandwidth issue. Next So within the statewide context, as Lysel mentioned, the IAC is facing some real challenges in terms of really exploding demand from the school districts and counties for support for projects that are not just desired but urgently needed. And so without a commensurate increase in appropriations, the IAC's dollars are being spread thinner and thinner across the state. And you can see here in the numbers, the potential pool of need is huge. Almost 1,400 public pre-K-12 school facilities statewide, 142 million gross square feet. The average age has increased now to 31 years back from 24 years, just a couple decades ago. And the industry standards for support of a portfolio this size of $70 billion value is no small amount per year. Next slide, please. There are five main areas of need in school facilities statewide that I'd like to touch on here. Three are perennial needs that are always present for every pre-K-12 portfolio, and that is to maintain sufficient physical condition, educational sufficiency as the needs on facilities evolve, as educational programs evolve and develop. And of course, if there's enrollment growth, need to accommodate the additional students with more seats. But there are two further areas of need that have developed recently. And the first is the need to expand pre-kindergarten services to meet the requirements of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, which in most school districts is involving adding pre-K classrooms and seats in different parts of the county. And then the last one is to decarbonize school facilities or convert them from systems that produce CO2 in heating and cooling by 2045 to meet the state's adopted climate protection goals in the Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about these need areas to share with you sort of the situation and how we're coming around to these challenges. So the first one is condition. You can see average age, which is a very rough proxy for condition, has been increasing in almost every district over the last few years, now to 31 years statewide. Wacomiko is a little bit, just a little bit below that. And next slide, please. FCI is a much more accurate look at conditions, Facility Condition Index. It's essentially the percentage depleted of the lifespan of the systems in the building. You can see that brand-new buildings, 0% FCI, 15% below, pretty much feels new, 15% to 30% FCI, very good condition, comfortable, everything operates as intended, 30% to 45% satisfactory. Some repairs are needed here and there. Doesn't feel uncomfortable generally anywhere in the occupied spaces. 45% to 60% FCI visibly in need of repair. The LEA should be considering and planning improvement solutions during that time period. And the key there is that the building may function okay most of the time, but occasionally can become unreliable. And the costs of maintenance will start to increase in that phase. And then finally, above 60%, building functions have become often unreliable. It's not as comfortable in some or all areas of the facility, and it needs to be on the school district's, the county's, capital plan for some future improvements. Next slide, please. Okay, what does the picture look like statewide? Well, of the 1,360 roughly facilities, which we are assessing about 25% every year, we see that 81% are in the 45% or above some, which is a lot of needed work. Next slide, please. All right, why is this the case now? How did we get to where we are with condition? Well, there are a number of factors that have gone into driving our condition to an average statewide of 53% depleted or 53% FCI. One of them is the significant population growth in the 60s and 70s that drove a bulge of spending in construction then that has resulted in a significant percentage, almost one out of five Maryland schools are 50-plus years old and are coming due for full renovation or replacement. The bulge is back. It's just the nature of when the buildings were built, and it's no one's fault, but it's something we have to grapple with. And then the second major factor is construction costs have doubled since 2012. And of course, local and state capital budgets have not doubled since 2012. You can see the figures here. And the purchasing power, as a result, has really declined nearly in half. And as a result, school districts have had to defer more and more of their needed maintenance, capital maintenance, such as replacing roofs and HVAC systems, and also, of course, the full renovations and replacements of buildings at the end of lifespan, which are called capital renewal. Next slide, please. So from our findings, we can conclude that the current levels of capital expenditure are not holding our condition steady. The Build to Learn Act infusion of the last few years has slowed the decline a bit, but not stopped it. And at the current levels of capital expenditure, the IAC estimates that future cost liabilities are trending towards the unmanageable. For this reason, we believe that we need to do everything we can to work together to identify which capital expenditures can be made in the near-to-mid term to keep the facilities doing what they need to do, serving students and staffs, and also keeping them on track to be manageable in the long term. Next slide, please. What do the facilities look like for Wacomiko County? Well, of the 24 facilities we've assessed, you have a weighted average FCI that is a bit lower than the statewide average at 51%, which is positive. It's ninth-highest average condition statewide. However, this is not the desired target range that I think everyone would like, which would be seeing an average portfolio-wide FCI over in the 30% range, which would be best for educational sufficiency and fiscal sustainability. Next slide, please. This table shows the Wacomiko schools ranked by FCI, which is highlighted by color to show the most depleted systems in red, and the next categories in orange, and those above 60% in what is kind of a golden color here, so that you can see that the needs of each building are different, right? Just because the FCI might be high doesn't mean that everything in the building is worn out or depleted. It may only be a couple of systems that are towards the end of their lifespan and should be considered for a system replacement. However, if there's a facility where most of the systems are highly depleted, then that suggests that the facility is a good candidate to be considered for a full renovation or replacement. The question is, when would that need to happen? Next slide, please. In educational sufficiency, we know that it's not easy to determine that. It's very case-by-case specific, building by building. We are working with each LEA to identify the most essential needed improvements to support educational sufficiency and deliver the educational programs and services needed for that particular student population. And we know that the capital renewal projects that are happening, not as quickly as we'd all love, but are happening, are replacing some of the worst-conditioned buildings, but will not cover all the educational sufficiency needs. Alterations may need to be funded from time to time in addition. And of course, growth, 14 of 24 counties will see more than the average statewide projected growth of 145% for the coming decade, and some new seats will be needed. Next slide, please. And finally, additional classrooms needed for Blueprint Pre-K. We are taking requests in the CIP from school districts for projects to add pre-K space. We're also working with each district's facilities' planning staffs to identify where they can bring to bear more space for pre-K at the lowest possible cost, but also delivering the services where the students need them and communities need them. It's not simple. It's a very complicated portfolio analysis, but we are ongoingly working with every school district to identify how we can support projects to help them bring online space they need. And finally, decarbonization. That one's tough because we do not have standards yet for decarbonizing school facilities. It's not possible to do cost estimates yet. We are working to develop a need-scoping framework and collect the data for that, but it's going to take some time, probably a couple of years. And we will be communicating with each school district as we move forward with some other state agency support to undertake this project. Next slide, please. On the state side, the legislative target overall for funding for 2026 is $450 million total, going to the IAC's programs. The minimums in statute are $40 million for the enrollment growth and relocatables, $90 for Healthy School Facility Fund total, and $6 million for aging schools, with the balance going to the CIP. The Governor's proposed budget recently has just laid out $300 million for the CIP, and the remaining $13.89 million added to the $40 million for the Enrollment Growth and Relocatables Program. And we are calculating how much that will bring in additional funds to each school district, including Wacomiko. And we'll know more about that in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. Here are the state capital appropriations for the last few years, so that you can see what the state contribution has been with the Build to Learn Act funds added. You can see here that the actual appropriations for the programs had been around $400 million up until 2023. And then we had influx of additional funding on the CIP as well as the Build to Learn, bringing the state total over a billion, close to a billion, for a couple of years running. And we're still well above. This year is looking to be, all told, close to $800 million in state capital being provided to school district projects. Next slide, please. But one last thing to point out here is the future is still murky because even with the Governor's budget for Fiscal '26, we still have no idea what kind of appropriations we'll have to work with in Fiscal '27. And of course, are not assuming that it's going to be a rosy picture, knowing what the state's overall budget picture, revenue picture looks like now. But also, because many school projects take two, three, maybe four, even sometimes more years to complete, the state share has to be paid out according to the cash flow and the construction progress. And so many projects have obligations that the IAC will need to pay out on in the coming couple of years. And you can see here, the total by county is a little bit over the IAC's internal target of $500 million maximum in future obligations that we have to plan to be able to fund in Fiscal '26, '27, and possibly eight future years. So this is all to show that the statewide need is huge. It has been increasing significantly over the last couple of years. And because of construction cost inflation, everyone is unable to make as much of a dent in that need as they had been accustomed to previously with the dollars they have. And the IAC, in carrying the state's contributions forward, is certainly, I won't say leveraged, because it's not a multiplication necessarily, but we are loaded looking forward into the next couple of years. And this is restricting our flexibility significantly in terms of being able to fund projects in a way that prevents forward funding. And so while we do not want to see forward funding, we don't have many options to avoid it in a number of cases right now. So this is the summary, and happy to take questions you might have. I'm going to try my video again here because I don't like talking from a black screen. You have to let me know if my connection drops out again.
Do I have any questions?
I started off.
I think so.
So I guess my other question there, I know you briefly just touched on it. Well, first of all, let me say, I thank you, I appreciate you for being here and taking the time to be with us. You know, our schools here are... I know every community takes theirs... You know, our schools here are, I know every community takes theirs seriously, but especially ours, we have a very strong growing community, as you might have heard earlier in the conversation. So we just want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. The question on the decarbonization component to this, I know I've asked this to our local folks here locally, and then I know, I don't know what the process is with the, if they're involved with, if the IAC's involved with it, but the larger component of trying to make our schools energy efficient, but also, you know, be able to produce energy, I guess, I don't know what our process is there. Are we, how are we moving in that direction, that we can utilize the spaces that much of our schools have to lower the cost? Because I guess all I'm looking at right now, a lot of budget deficits projected across the, all levels of government, and I'm trying to think of ways that we can use things like solar energy, in addition to the decarbonization and the changes in the HVAC units and things like that. But how can we make money out of this, and how is that factored into, pardon, not make money, how can we lower our costs through the, through these kinds of things? And I don't know how that's factored in with the work that is being done statewide, or how does that translates to us locally, but it just continues to be something that comes up to me as an opportunity.
Absolutely. That's a great question. I hope you don't mind if I take just a second to go into some detail on it. First thing is, the solution set for decarbonization, energy efficiency, and reducing costs of school facilities' operation over the coming years are not determined yet. They're not prescriptive. The state is not going to be releasing some menu of recommendations of, this is the way you do it, and you should do this and that. The first step is identifying, what would it take to get a portfolio of buildings like Wycomico County Public Schools, Facilities, to be hopefully decarbonized and energy efficient over a 20-year period? And the first step to determining what the needs are is going to take a couple of years. It's going to take evaluating the buildings in depth. It's going to take comparing the information collected against the lifespans of the systems, the type of systems. There will be, absolutely will be opportunities for Wycomico County and the school system to leverage the value of the facilities they have to save money in the long run. It's going to take some capital investments, but it's going to bear fruit in reduced operations and ideally reduced maintenance costs over the coming decades. But the only way to do it affordably is to integrate that work with the normal portfolio maintenance that the school district will have to do anyway. And so, for example, there's no point in saying, hey, we could save a few dollars on reduced electricity costs by putting solar on a building right now and swapping out an HVAC system if the building needs to be fully renovated and replaced in just a few years, right? A good piece of the value of the, you know, new system investments would be lost when they're pulled right back out in a few years for a full renovation or replacement of the building. So, every school district needs to come up with a comprehensive strategy to address the buildings in a way that piggybacks on what you would be doing anyway to replace systems when they, when their lifespan expires, so to speak, when they are no longer workable. And so that you're not doing the work twice, and you're leveraging savings in full renovations and replacements. And the state is going to be fully supportive of that kind of approach, because it will save both the county and the state in the long run, on the capital and on the operating side. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, and I just wanted, by the way, I forgot, I forgot what context to that, but the governor did just release in the budget potentially 90, I think 80 or 90 million dollars to go to local governments, and all of the components within local government to use energy savings. So there's going to be a new grant program through the Maryland Energy Administration to be able to access that, so I'd love for that to be a component of things.
It absolutely is. We are partnered right now with the Maryland Energy Administration to help them get their grant dollars right on to the school districts' projects wherever possible. We've been sharing information with them, helping them identify where the grants last year could go, and I think they put $24 million in additional money out last year, and they're looking for now quadrupling of that this year. That is underway, absolutely, and in fact, we'll also be working with the Maryland Energy Administration and each school district to figure out how to help each county scope the needs in a very efficient way that leverages the state information, so you don't have to pay for consultants to go out and collect it themselves. So this is coming. We will be, you know, in conversation constantly with WCPS staff over the next couple of years around these topics. I think all, all the capacity we can bring to bear is going to come to bear on this. But again, it's not the only priority. It has to be integrated, or we will never be able to deliver all the things we need to deliver.
So, Councilman Hastings, just to add specific to Fruitland Primary School, we did apply for a Maryland Energy Administration grant. We did receive it, a little over $2.1 million, which will allow us to achieve net zero for this particular building. Now, in an ideal world, if we could stretch that money as fast as possible, and the cost of battery storage were to be more palatable, it would be great if we could be storing that and utilizing that. However, at this point in time, our goal is to achieve net zero, to meet those goals while we are, in fact, replacing this building at no additional cost to the county. It's coming from the Maryland Energy Administration. We also received another MEA grant. I don't remember which number it was under, but it was allowing us to delve into specific school sites to assess for solar. It was a study. We are working actually this afternoon to get the results of those assessments, which will then assist us in applying for additional MEA grants. Now, all those grants are competitive, so we don't necessarily guarantee getting them. However, we are putting the work into applying for those to help offset, because the board is going to experience a utility upcharge this year that they're going to want to have to offset. So we are actively working on those pieces.
Just one more quick question. I know we're past 1:45, so I just wanted to, I guess, just on this topic alone, I guess the, for the Fruitland situation, I guess the state has not been, you know, in the past has been known to put money forward and then to take it back, I guess, for the folks watching at home. What guarantee do we have? Are we very reasonable feelings that we're not going to lose any of the, given the current budget situation, I guess, with the state and the $3 billion deficit, structural deficit? Do we feel very confident, or what, can you tell the folks, I guess, at home who's watching maybe, to reassure that the funding that is, in this case, forward funding and others, that the state funds will continue to be there, at least to some degree, I guess? If you can.
Yeah, I want to be very clear. The state does not and will not put money forward and then take it back. What the state must do is make a commitment for a total dollar amount to a project, and then it will deliver those dollars over the coming years. The only question is, how quickly? And for, for example, with Fruitland, when we put forward the maximum state award on Fruitland and the project is approved, the IAC will have to stop approving as many new projects in the coming years in order to ensure that we can complete the payout on Fruitland. So what will happen is, if the state budget becomes tighter and the IAC's appropriations diminish somehow, then Fruitland is not going to get less. Other projects coming down the pipeline are simply going to have to wait more time before they can be approved, until we're done paying off the state commitment to Fruitland. So again, the state does not put forward money and then take it back. The state puts forward a amount of money that it will, it will pay out on a project, and it pays it out as quickly as it possibly can. Sometimes that ends up being a couple more years longer than originally estimated, and certainly than anyone hopes, but those dollars will come. It's the following projects that might have to be deferred or postponed somewhat to make that happen. Does that cover your concern?
Thank you, Mr. Dunleah. We sort of need to move along here, run a little bit over. One quick question. If all the planets line up, what's a rough timeline?
I can't actually tell at this point. Lisa, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so the next step would be, we would work on that intergovernmental agreement, because as you're hearing, they, they will commit to a dollar amount, but it's how fast we're able to receive those funds. In order for the board to be comfortable in signing a construction contract to proceed with construction, we're always looking for about 50% of that overall guaranteed maximum price. Once we get that intergovernmental agreement in place, which ideally we would probably be touching base with council towards, after working through the executive's office, end of February into mid-March, so that we can authorize proceeding with bidding with the trade contracts at the end of March, with the goal of putting a shovel in the ground in probably the end of June, after we get through all those contract approvals.
What's the approximate completion?
Two years from now.
Two years?
Yep.
While we're talking about schools, how's Mardella doing?
Very well. Phase four is nearing completion. Well, the plan is to have the entire new school turned over to us this summer and open to students in the fall, and removal of the remaining portable building over the summer, completion of the parking and site and groundwork, and be to a fully functional school for the fall of '25.
Can we, can we throw a big party with Mr. Dunleah and others and all, and the staff and the team at Mardella when we open it? Because as a proud Mardella warrior, I'd love to see that happen.
We will definitely have a ceremony, when we open, a rededication, and IAC staff certainly will be invited. We'll look forward to celebrating together that wonderful milestone as we move forward to the next one at Fruitland.
Awesome, thank you.
With the new layout of the school and the portables going away, is that going to help alleviate the traffic?
Yeah, traffic flow will be much improved. We'll be able to have a dedicated bus ramp and separation of buses and parents and faculty and students.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time today. Mrs. Hurley, I believe we got a road paving update? Mr. Speaker, thank you for your patience. Thank you for braving the cold. I know you guys are hopping and skipping out there, right?
We sure are. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to just give a general overview, and then if you have questions, certainly could take any follow-up. So, in FY '24 and '25 to date, we've repaved approximately 100 miles of Wycomico County Road. That includes the four miles of Athel Road that was added on late last year due to the revenue windfall. We have a recommended paving list for spring of 2025, which, as we speak, is being uploaded today, that has an alphabetical listing of the streets by street observation that we've marked for work. Just to emphasize, this is not expansion work. It's not doing anything except repaving or repairing a given section of road. So what you'll see when that gets posted on the web is you'll see, for instance, Main Street from Fifth Street to Eighth Street. So they'll identify the paved section, the origin and the destination. So it should be pretty clear exactly which areas are being repaved. Within the next eight weeks, and you might hear an echo in the room from the previous presenters, it's quite fortuitous actually, within the next eight weeks, a pavement rating program will be rolled out for all 715 miles of Wycomico's inventory. And the goal there is to use the latest technology in reviewing street conditions. It's a combination of a 360-degree camera, along with ground-penetrating radar. And what they do with this is, they basically drive the 715 miles of road, and they get an idea of the condition of the visible layer, and exactly what's going on underneath, whether it's degrading, on the verge of collapse, hopefully not, but in everything in between. This will create what we call a PCI, compared to last presentation was an FCI. This is a pavement condition index. It'll rate every mile of those 715 on a scale of 0 to 100, on that same continuum between failed for zero and good to excellent for between 85 and 100. That'll give us a sense of priority. Now, the, the organization that, that is going to be doing the work for us has experienced it doing this, and they, they bring some really valuable parameters into the evaluation process. They come up with the PCI, the pavement condition index. They actually have knowledge of and work with the State's Department of Planning on volume information. And of course, they, they ask us for a rough idea about what our budget might be. So they take those three factors together, and they make some recommendations based on the condition rating as to where all those 715 miles should be in priority. Ideally, this gets rolled out to say be a five-year paving program, confronting the most urgent conditions first, those that affect the greatest traffic volumes, and those that are in the most grave condition for paving. Along with the data they gather and combine into sort of a prioritization equation, they also make recommendations based on the budget we give them of what the best paving solution is. So, we're not necessarily spending the most money on the highest priority road based on the paving design that's already there and the volume that, that travels it. It may be perfectly fine to tar and chip, again, even though we've done it for the past 15 years on a given road segment. But based on volume information, it may be time to change to a different paving design. And there are a variety of basic paving constructions that are, that don't involve doing an actual physical design of the road, that are commonly put out there when we do this kind of paving work. An added bonus of this review of the 715 miles is, it's also going to geocode and recognize the condition and entire inventory of our signage, which currently we don't really have a documented record for. So ideally, what that'll do for us is, it'll, it'll set all the signs on a replacement schedule based on reflectivity. And they too will come in with some rating about how much life left the sign has, in situations where they've lost reflectivity, or they're, you know, not perfectly plumb on a post, or they're not in the most visible situation. We'll be able to make those changes. And with an accurate inventory of what's out there and its geocoded location, we'll be able to more actively replace and keep effective the signage that's out there. So, that particular process, we expect to begin in the next six to eight weeks. We're finalizing terms and conditions with the vendor, who will do that job for us. And once they get started, they'll get out there and do, say, about 20 miles of our 700, and come back to us with that segment to make sure we can fine-tune the parameters with them according to our needs. And then, once we've got those things nailed down, they expect it will take probably five to six months to do the rest. So ideally, and situations don't always work out ideally, but the goal is to get this process managed so that effective July 1st, we're starting with a new five-year program. And wherever we are in the list that's out there today, whether it's complete, mostly complete, half-complete, we're going to take a snapshot also of those roads, because they're in the inventory. And the kind of data that we're pulling up that's, that's objective may place them in a different place on the continuum. But either way, we, we're going to have the, the data in the program to recognize what's best replaced with the best and most effective paving solution for the traffic volume over the next five-year period.
What paving methods are we currently using outside of the normal asphalt?
We, we use tar and chip, and we have used slurry seal, but we're really beginning to see a degradation of that, you know, as time goes on. And like I said earlier, I mean, the lesser costly, less technical paving... volume and what's underneath the existing construction. We've typically gone out, from my understanding, and we've looked at the visible condition based on field observation. And that's fine if that's the best you can do, but this will definitely take identifying the best future action to the next level.
Who, is any counties around using this vendor or this method that you're talking about?
They are. Actually, my prior employer, the city of Milford, used it. And although on a smaller scale, they did exactly the same thing. However, they, they were prepared to actually go with a documented stamped engineering design for every replaced road. They were interested in getting rid of every road that was not designed hot mixed asphalt. But I don't think that's necessarily going to be the need for us. We have a good many out of those 715 miles rural roads to where the lesser treatment is perfectly fine. At some point, you know, continuing to, to polish your shoes over and over again and build up those layers of really not a very durable payment, paving method that typically can degrade in a different way than asphalt does, you have to make a call at some point to sort of mill it off and start with a fresh paving design.
We're going to get the paving schedule some point in time.
Sure. It's, it's being uploaded now for what should happen in spring. We've already got a contractor lined up. We don't have a priority to it yet. What we'll do is we'll sit down with the paving contractor, and from what I understand previously, that this step hadn't taken place before either, but we've had trouble keeping the paving contractor on our work because, as jobs go, we're not the biggest or most expensive thing for them to be doing. However, if you sit down and put the effort forth, us with our priority of what we've observed in the field, still going by the old method, and them, by their priority of how it couples up with proximal projects in the area, you can help them minimize demobilization time so they can string three projects together and get an awful lot more done quickly. That list gross of the prioritization should be on the net, the web this afternoon. Once we have the kickoff meeting, we'll revise it and put a priority to it, and then we'll put it back on the web again.
Problem, I think, that we've had in the past couple of years is that our work's not been able to get done, putting in new pipes and things like that ahead of time for the paving contractor to get their work done.
You're exactly right about that. I did neglect to mention that. I mean, that's, that's an essential part of every paving rehab.
I mean, you can't just go out and pave a road. There's work that the county has to do ahead of that.
Exactly. Exactly.
Do we have enough, enough employees and stuff in place? Are we going to have enough this year to keep ahead of, ahead of that so they can stay working, or?
We, we think we have a pretty good grasp on the remaining drainage projects left where the infrastructure might go across and underneath a road. To get that all straight and renewed, if necessary, we don't want to be in the business of putting down a fresh coat of anything, even if it's just tar and chip to, four months later, have to saw cut it and put in a new pipe. So, that's definitely a part of the planning process.
You good?
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Wavy.
Yeah, great work.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Or to move.
Second.
Or your number on it?
Second.
Or can I write your number down?
I think I was the second.
Say aye. All right. We are adjourned.
You can't remember your number either, huh?
Thank you, Joe.